He's talking to himself.
Want to call order the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, December 15th, 2014. Mr. Vice Chair, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely, my honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda for tonight, starting off at number two, after reading the mail, the town administrator and assistant town administrator, the finance and budget section, A, deputy police chief employment agreement, B, staffing vacancy review for the highway department, C, cross-town connect grant application update, D, consent agenda, which will include annual license renewal, annual conflict of interest law determinations, introduce revised hiring policy and procedures, and four, notice of takings, newer state road and Nagog Hill Road. At seven o'clock, we'll have our input, both public and members. Seven-ten, master plan updates, steering committee appointments, along with the planning board. Seven-thirty, affordable housing, the MAPC housing production plan update. B, Matthew Field discussing five-eleven Goldsmith Street. That might be put off until later in the meeting because of scheduling conflicts. Six, public hearings on license applications. Then we have public hearings, eight-fifteen, Act Three, five-twenty-nine, King Street, amend liquor license, entertainment license. Eight-twenty-five, Littleton Cafe, Hoops Open, a new establishment at three-oh-five Foster Street for common vicular license, and eight-thirty-five, Fast Franks at one-eighty-four Air Road, the common vicular's license. Eight-forty-five, police and fire drug update, and nine other business in minutes. Mr. Town Administrator, mail?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a couple of items in here. One, we have a flyer from the Department of Elder and Human Services regarding a needs assessment. Public meeting that will be held on Saturday, January 10th, 2015, in the morning, from ten-thirty to eleven-thirty a.m. in room one-oh-three here at the town offices. And that is part of our needs assessment for elder and elders in the community. And the other letter that's in the packet is a copy of a letter to, which was sent from the Department of Environmental Protection. It was copied to the Board of Health, but they provided us with a copy as well. It gives, it's DEP giving temporary approval to the Fifteen Great Road project for use of the wastewater treatment facility. And while it indicates that there is the requirement that the facility be online by February 15, 2015, that they are giving temporary approval between now and then for up to sixteen single-family residences to hook into that. And I know that there were some questions that were raised about it, and I just wanted to update the board to say that the staff has been consulting with town council about what steps we can take. The council is in contact with DEP to confirm where this sort of a letter fits into their standard operating procedures. But there is an initial indication that with respect to the conditions under the comprehensive permit issued by the ZBA, that it's town council's opinion that this approval letter does not satisfy those ZBA conditions, at least with the ability of the forty-B properties to hook up to the wastewater treatment facility any sooner than when the whole thing comes online. That is not the case with the forty-A properties that are not subject to a comprehensive permit. That they are, number one, they're not governed by the conditions that the ZBA issued for the forty-B. They are, that they operate separately. But I did want to advise the board that we are seeking advice of town council to advise the building commissioner on how to handle the matter of certificates of occupancy. And I will say, the one of the things that I was most concerned about is, since there are apparently a number of closings that are scheduled between now and February 15th, wanted to be sure that if the town has this information, that the prospective buyers should have the information. And we confirmed today from town council who contacted the attorneys who are handling the closing, that the, at least as of today, at our request, that the buyers are being notified of this circumstance. This is seen, it seemed something that the buyer ought to be aware of.
We have to move after February 15th, if it ain't done.
The question, I think, individually, I know that Mr. McCurdy had emailed me, but didn't want to make it a board-wide thing, and I spread my concerns. My question, Keith, is when you speak about the forty-B, and it doesn't meet the requirements of the ZBA, does that refer just to the affordable units or the other units?
It refers to all of the, all of the units that are subject to the forty-B. And that that, and that Rowland would be able to withhold their certificate of occupancy for the forty-B units for the simple reason that the, that this circumstances does not meet the written conditions of the ZBA decision. There is no similar condition that's not being met for the forty-A properties. That's entirely administered by the DEP and not by our local Board of Health. And a DEP makes a determination that the holding tanks can be used on a temporary basis by properties that they're allowing to hook up with that. And it doesn't violate a town condition that it appears to be something that DEP will rule on, but we've asked town council to confirm what, how DEP is operating in this circumstance, and we'll share that information.
My concern was, there is no other place where we've allowed, that I'm aware of, anybody to move in with an incomplete subject system. And, you know, who knows what the next delay is, a snowstorm, whatever it is. I think we should be very careful about granting any temporary occupancy based on what they've already proven, that they can't meet their own schedule. And they are not rookies at doing this stuff. They know what's required, they knew the timeframes they were on. I don't think we should be in a position to bend over backwards to accommodate temporary occupancy. That's really their problem, and their production problem. I don't feel we should feel pressured at all.
Well, you know, we're not feeling pressured to do anything that we shouldn't do or shouldn't have, or don't have the authority to do. But if, and so the, from that standpoint, the easy call is that if this doesn't comply with the condition of the forty-B permit, then Rowland has a clear basis for not giving them a CO. For the other ones, where, you know, the plain reading of the permission from DEP appears to be of a temporary nature, if that allows Rowland to conclude that he cannot, that he cannot good conscience give a permanent CO, then all he can do is give the temporary CO. And that may or may not be enough for closing to happen. I'm not sure what bank you go to that gets you, that gives you a mortgage on a property you can only occupy until February 15th.
And, you know, go ahead, sorry.
No, my follow, I'm sorry. My follow-up to that is, well, we have, we're crossing the line here because these are private residents, they're going to be served by a sewer system that's part of the forty-B. So, to my level of thinking, they are connected because they're allowing something to happen that's part of the forty-B process. The sewage is going to be placed onto the forty-B property.
We'll certainly take a look at that and have the attorney advise us on whether we can make that, draw that conclusion or not. We can draw it on the forty-B, and I guess the jury's out on forty-A, and we'll rely on his further advice.
My only concern is putting, writing to DEP to say, who's monitoring this?
Yeah.
Period, you know? Put it back on them if anything comes to...
In the short term, I've got to say, I feel a lot better that the prospective buyers have been notified because they weren't, apparently were not going to be otherwise.
Real set.
That's it.
Okay, two-A, deputy police chief contract. First thing, we're going to decide whether we want to go into executive session on this or not.
Well, Mr. Chair, I was, you know, working with the chief, being part of, not negotiating so much, but, you know, he's dealing with a deputy, and we've worked through the contract. I truly, I don't think we need to go. My perspective is not to go into executive session. That, as we did with the deputy fire chief, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, we cleaned up some things in the language Mr. Patterson had no issue with, and the contract's pretty straightforward, as is the deputy fire chief's.
Yeah, we're following the practice that you, that a deputy starts at grade twelve, step one, and that upon the first, the July first, the following July first, that the deputy goes to grade twelve, step two, which is what we did for the deputy fire chief.
So, stand up in session.
Yeah.
Chief, anything we want to add about this contract? I mean, we've all had a chance to review it, and like...
Basically, the same as the prior deputy, myself. Like Jim said, we, Mr. Carr said, we cleaned up the language through council and through Bonnie and through Ann, and cleaned us the language, things like that in there. And just made it more specific and neater. I reviewed it all with Deputy Patterson, and he's agreeable to the terms, so. I'll look for a vote, please.
Anything good?
I just want to ask paragraph ten, please, B, where it gets to the Quinn bill. I think I understand, but I just want to be sure. Where we say, Commonwealth reimbursed the town for less than its full share under the Quinn bill. The educational incentive stipend due to the deputy chief shall be the total of the town's share under, and then the Commonwealth's payment under the bill. So, it was fifty-fifty, is that right?
Right. I mean, they're never going to ref, you know, if they ever funded, if they were fully funded the Quinn bill, again, the town doesn't have to pay its, the extra stipend anymore, is basically what that says.
Yeah, that's, I just want to be clear.
They're never going to ref, you know, say it again?
That's what I want to make sure it's clear. It's not that we're going to make up the difference of what the state has not funded.
We also pay the town's half, the town's share. That's all we ever...
And just to be clear, new patrolman coming on board don't get the Quinn bill or the education incentive at this point in time. And Mr. Patterson coming up through the ranks, receive the Quinn and receive the incentive, so we carried it forward.
Because I just recall that when the state stopped full funding, there were issues as to whether towns would pick up the difference.
It varied from town to town, and we had the, we had wronged this language for a management perspective in there.
That makes it clear to everybody, thank you.
No other questions, look for a motion. Move the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, subsection 97A, to approve authorized execution of an employment contract agreement with deputy police chief Jeffrey M. Patterson for the period of January 1, 2015, through June 30, 2015, at grade twelve, step one, seventy-seven eighty-three twenty, with one-year extension for the period of July 1, 2015, through June 30, 2016, at grade twelve, step two, seventy-three two sixty-seven point nine-two. Second, move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you very much.
Easy.
Thank you. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
It's official.
I haven't seen all the signatures yet.
Yeah, we haven't signed it yet, we didn't, we'll hold out now.
The ink hasn't dried yet.
All right, two-B, staffing vacancy review, highway equipment operator laborer, which we've discussed in the past, is there any discussion on this?
We're filling a position which is finally vacated by retirement.
Ready there, Mr. Chair? Sure am. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the highway operations manager request under the staffing vacancy review policy to fill a full-time benefit at grade six, position of highway equipment operator slash laborer. Second, move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Thank you.
Two-C, cross-town connect.
Cross-town connect, update is that there is no action to take. We've been, we were not able to pursue the grant for the Community Innovation Challenge Grant Program because the governor cut the funding. We have been pursuing some alternatives, including the federal grant that's described in here, but it does not look like we'll be able to put that together. So, we'll keep trying, and if we bring one, if we find one, we'll bring it back. No action.
Two-D, one, class one, class two, common viculars, AADs, entertainment lodging house.
These are annual reviews, and we have one business that, is it one business that's no longer in business?
And all the other ones are renewals.
We all bought.
Okay, the renewals include class one, Acton Toyota of Littleton. Class two will be Brad Millen miller automotive. Three, Paul Ruthia at two-fifty-six Air Road. Richard Donapoli, Advantage Automotive Investments at six-seventy-seven Great Road. Five, Raymond Kanunin, one-eighty-two Hotwell Avenue. Six, Triumph Modular Incorporated at eighty-three and one-ninety-four Air Road. And C, seven, Great Road Auto Sales at two-twenty-one Great Road. And eight, Acton Toyota, two-twenty-one, also looking for a class two license.
So, the class one is for, the full class two is used, right?
Right.
Okay, just to make it sure. You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the annual renewal licenses for class one and two common particular automatic amusement devices, entertainment, and enlarging the housing license for calendar 2015. List of said license apart here and, oh, that was just the, yeah, yeah, just the class one and twos.
I'll read through those.
Okay.
This motion just to the class one and class two, motion was made.
Class one and class two?
Yep.
Okay.
Moving in second, all those in favor of the class one and class two renewals, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Now, with the next spot, common vicular's license to include George Davis doing business as Little Peach, a Little Peach, Dominic Steven, Littleton Liquors, Common Foods doing business as Littleton Sub Shop, Calavestit Civic Association, which is on Newtown Road, Sergey Sehavich doing business as Fallon's Wine and Liquors and Taylor Street, Donald's Supermarkets, Gary Archer, Archer's Mobile, Robin Owing at Yangtze River Restaurant, Dave Hawn at Chip Shots, Joseph Mansour at Common Convenience, I have Grease as Pizza Express. Excuse me. Let's see, where'd I leave off?
Pizza Express, twelve.
You're on twelve.
Twelve. VFW Post on Taylor Street, Minuteman Campground, Acton Toyota of Littleton, William Donovan, Shop Street, and Brain Tree, they're doing Dunkin' Donuts, four-sixty King Street and Great Road, Sub Littleton, which is Subway, Delago Donut Shops, which is Dippin' Donuts on Air Road, Andrea Alvado at three-twenty-one, three-forty-one King Street, which is Littleton Cafe, Concorde Oil Company doing business at Sitka with two-fifty-six Air Road, and Concorde Oil Company doing business at Shell Travel Plaza at twenty-five King Street, Act Three doing business at Act Three. Automatic amusement devices, VFW, Minuteman Campground and Chip Shots, Lodging House, Thomas and Mary Dugan at five-twenty-three King Street. And is that it, entertainment, that's it? Yeah, it didn't come out in mind, Chip Shots for entertainment. Any questions by the board?
That's on the last page, Chip Shots.
Didn't come out in mind. Any questions, board? All right, move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the annual renewal licenses for common viculars, automatic amusement devices, entertainment, enlarging house licenses for calendar 2015, a list of said licenses to be made part of hereof. Second, move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Two-D, three, policy introduction, revise hiring policy procedures.
We had two-D, two, was conflict of interest law determination?
I'll put it so I can see it. Two. Thank you.
Okay, two-D, D, conflict of interest law determinations. Town employees also serving as paid part-time athletic officials have gone through this in the past.
Because the school department hires their athletic officials each year, that the law says that each hire is a separate act. And so, every year after they hire them, we'll be adopting this procedural vote.
Okay, this is going to include Denise Moniz, Ryan Johansson, Kevin Hunt, Judith Hunt, Nancy Morrison, and Millie McGovern, Mildred McGovern. Questions by the board? For motion then?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 268A, subsection twenty, B, and D, to approve exemptions for the following town employees also employed as paid part-time athletic officials by the school department. List attached.
Second.
Would you like me to read the names?
No, we already read them.
Yeah.
Second. Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, two-D, four, oh, T, D three.
D three.
We'll buy it again. Revise hiring policy procedures, hiring.
This is the document which was introduced and discussed with members of the personnel board and our HR council, Jack Dolan, a couple of meetings ago. The Board of Selectmen asked that it be amended to include the Veterans' Preference Bylaw Division, which had just been approved by the Attorney General that day. It has been so amended, it's been distributed to all of the department heads, and they have all concur with it, they're shaking their heads. So. We're rolling there, so, okay.
Any questions?
Yep.
The only one was the veterans, I thought it was fine early.
Any comments from the board? Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to receive a proposed revised hiring policy procedures document as recommended by the Personnel Board on November 20, 2014, and schedule the adoption of said policy and procedures for the Board of Selectmen's next regular meeting on July, January 12, 2015. Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Two-D, four, notice of taking, newer state road, Nagog Hill Road, Article fourteen of the annual town meeting on, what the, special tone, yeah, on the 12th of November. town meeting on, what the, special tone here, on the 12th of November.
And at the board's last meeting on December 4th, you voted to execute the order of taking for these two roads, which, and those takings have been recorded in the Registry of Deeds. They were recorded on Thursday, so the date to be filled in would be December 11th in the motion. And the final step from the board's perspective is to take the, now take this procedural vote to give notice of the taking to the affected property owners. So that's what this motion is, that's what the forms are. I've been advised by Jim Clyde that we're, in response to the board's question last time, where the 25% design phase would be completed by January. And that would be, we would be scheduling a meeting with the affected properties for end of February, beginning of February. That's what new estate owners.
Okay. Questions from the board? Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 79 subsection 17 and Article 14 of the November 12, 2014, special town meeting to execute notices of taking of the butters on New Estate Road as shown in the plan entitled "Street Acceptance Plan" of New Estate Road, Littleton, Massachusetts, and Nagark Hill Road, as shown on the plan entitled "Street Acceptance Plan" of Nagark Hill Road, Littleton, Massachusetts. Both plans dated September 4, 2014, and prepared by Green Needles International, Green Needles, Green Interna, I got green needles, I'm traveling through West, but I see it. Green International Affiliates, Inc., relative to the order of taking recorded in December 11, 2014, at the Middlesex County Registry of Deeds. Second. Moving in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Keep, we're asking input for both public and members. We'd like to keep that right at 7:00. There's something small we can fit in the next five minutes?
Well.
Minutes?
No. Yeah, minutes.
Seeing none? Thank you.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve minutes from December 1, 2014.
Second. Moving in second to approve the minutes. December 1. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
We could sing Christmas curls for three minutes.
Have at it.
I could update you and just let you know that this Wednesday morning at 10 o'clock, the state's executive, I'm sorry, the state's Economic Assistance Coordinating Council will be holding its quarterly meeting, and one of the items on that agenda is the matter of the state approval of the TIF group, agreement. We have a letter of support from state rep Jim Arcero, and I'll be attending that meeting where they have a lot of TIF agreements that they are considering on that morning.
Did our senator send a letter?
I've asked him, and I've not seen a letter yet, and I'm following that up.
Are you going today? Hi, Jim. Oh.
He's been called to the principal's office.
I'll sign mine later on. These are little Joe Notts. These are off of the big guy. We don't have nothing to do with them. Now, we just can't, two more minutes. Melissa Hebert's probably in Mexico right now, enjoying the warm weather. Here we are, slaving over the town's business, making sure the town keeps running. This is awesome. All right, close to 7:00. Anyone have any public input? Since we waited a long time. Seeing none. Board input. Mr. Vella, anything?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCurdy?
Yes, I do. Interesting thing came in the mail the other day, and it's called the Local Business Guide, Middlesex West Chamber of Commerce. And I was looking through it, and obviously I was looking with an idea to how many businesses in here were Littleton businesses, and not surprisingly, it was more centered around Acton and Concord and some in Boxborough. But what occurred to me is that this is the type of initiative that we have talked about off and on for years, and more recently here, the kind of thing where we can help promote local business. And I don't know who would undertake this kind of project, but it sure would be nice to have a listing of the Littleton businesses, a little bit about what they do, and of course the services they can provide to Littleton people. If we're going to have an economic development strategy that is truly beneficial, then we have to promote small business, because small business will be the foundation for economic development, and when we're investing in small business, then the town makes that well because that investment comes back to us in additional tax revenue. So I looked at this, I says, this is a great idea, can we do something like this? And most of you have probably seen this in the mail, that goes through all the businesses and what they do in Littleton, because there's not many of the Littleton ones here. Granted, many of these are advertising in here, but I don't know, it was just my thought, that we might try to find a way, maybe some civic-minded organization like Rotary would consider something like that.
Well, you've identified a Chamber of Commerce document, Middlesex West, a good number of our folks currently associate with the Neshoba Chamber, because we're right on pretty much the boundary of the two. So it'd be probably a good idea, probably for the Neshoba one, too, to see what's happening there already. I did speak with Melissa Federhoff, maybe a couple of weeks ago, Executive Director of the Neshoba Valley Chamber of Commerce, and talked to her about maybe a business association here in town, and maybe start looking at that, and, you know, working with more people. Completely nascent stage at this point, it's but a flash in the pan of an idea at this point. So something to be worked on, and understanding that certain organizations in town have their own charters and the like, and someone who's more directly associated with businesses and a business association of some sort in town of our local businesses, might be a very good place to begin with that. And certainly as we go through this, the Mass. Plan Steering Committee, work with the Account Development Committee, and some of the other boards and committees in town, you know, some sort of pamphlet or whatever that can indeed be published and distributed, it'd be a great idea.
First, I'd like to congratulate Chief Wazinski for graduating the Chief Officers' Program at the Mass. Fire Academy. Congratulations. Job well done. One question is, what is your next step in regards to your credentials? I mean, is there any other courses?
I just need to file for my credentials.
Nice. Congratulations. I'd also like to congratulate the football team. They made it to Gillette again this year for the second year in a row. Unfortunately, it wasn't as positive as last year. They played a great game. They tried to come back, they fought through some injuries, and talking to the head coach, Mike Lynn, he's all excited about next year, so congratulations to the boys at the high school. That's it.
Thanks. I just want to take the opportunity to wish everyone a happy Hanukkah and a Merry Christmas coming up, since we don't meet until after the holidays. This also brings an end to the year 2014, a very special year for the town of Littleton as far as the Tricentennial Committee goes and everything that we did. I just want to thank everyone that was involved. There was so much work being done during the year by a lot of great volunteers to make this work, and I certainly want to thank those people that volunteered. I'd also like to thank, one of the last publications that, or pieces of paper that was put out by the Tricentennial Committee, should have been an action limited almost everyone's mail slot. It just lists all the businesses that made the donations, and we couldn't have had this work without these businesses coming forth. So if you have this document at home, it would be greatly appreciated if you read through it and thank those businesses and some of the families that are there that made this happen, because this great celebration that we had, it cost a lot of money to have things go through, and there's a lot of nice people that came through. So I just wanted to make sure at the end of 2014, what a great year it was, that we thanked those people. So I just wanted to carry that out. 2014 will be a fantastic year as far as our celebrations go. All right, moving on. 7:10, we have Master Plan Update Steering Committee appointments. Are you not here for that, Mr. Crowley?
I am.
Is someone else in the planning board coming?
Oh, I'm on the plane with Brad.
Yeah. Anybody else coming?
I have no idea.
Okay. We've had two applications from residents at large. I'm going to recuse myself, because it's going to be re-adaptized again to try to fill those two slots, and I have a relative, I think, that's going to be putting a application in, so I don't want to be, although town council said it's really maybe not something I had to recuse myself from, but he thought it'd be the best interest to make this go smoothly, so I'm going to recuse myself for the next part of this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have the, our agenda item is the Master Plan Update Steering Committee. The Board of Selectmen have made their appointments, the Planning Board have made their appointments of Mr. Richard Crowley and Mr. Peter Scott for the Board of Selectmen. For those of you that don't know, Ms. Melissa Hebert and Mr. Paul Vella are representatives of this board. So tonight, we have two applications for the committee. If I can ask Mr. Michael Zeldin to come on up and get growth, I mean, answer some questions?
The witness stand.
That's nice.
Yes.
Nice. Well, thank you for your participation, and Mr. Zeldin, if you'd like to just give a little brief history of yourself to the board, that'd be appreciated.
Well, I'm a new resident to Littleton, and to educate myself, I've been attending the Planning Board meetings, or a lot of them, as well as starting on the Selectmen meetings, and I've been trying to, as it were, bring my experience, which I'll be happy to review for you in a moment, to bear on being someone from the, shall we say, newly arrived outside to take a, so we say, a fresh look, a different look at the town, because I noticed in talking to and listening mainly to many of the components of government, that much the same thing is said, and looking back on the record, much of the same things are done and said in previous years. My background includes, in addition to several advanced degrees in electrobiology, which has actually nothing to do other than common sense with what's in front of us, I also have about 25 to 30 years in venture capital, primarily in startups and middle-stage companies, biotech and IT. And then near the middle end, I guess, of that particular phase, I was involved in mergers and acquisitions, another form of pillaging was the best way to describe that.
We don't want you to hold anything back here.
You need to know, you need to know this, otherwise, you have a new fox in the here, you gotta be careful what you invited.
Did you pillage successfully?
Oh, yes. In those days, it was much easier, there was a lot more around. The, my current activity, which I'm trying to bring to a close, because it involves traveling, is I have my own consulting operation in bio IT and IT and development of new pharmaceuticals, which takes me to other cities and other places, so I need an airport, and so thus Littleton.
We're not having an airport in town.
No, no, I'm just saying, just in case, just in case. So in any event. My background is a combination of, and I have run my business side, the largest we ever got was 200 people. I, my main job as CEO and founder was to please stay out of their way. I'm somewhat exaggerating, but I think you get the general idea. So it's mainly common sense and experience, and that I'm bringing to the table. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Motivation, what would you like to see? So you're wanting to think, you're thinking about wanting to be on the Steering Committee, and I know you've extensively studied the old one, one for 2002, because I've read everything that you put in the application, and thanks, because that was a lot of homework you did, and a lot of analysis to bring forward for, thought for all of us. So it's certainly a very good start, appreciate that.
Thank you.
What are some key elements you may see that we could go forward with?
Well, we touched on one of them, this is another discussion, but economic development is clearly, I'm using that phrase broadly speaking, economic development is one of them. And I think, I think it's very interesting that the particular document you referred to, in particular, struck me as being emblematic of what's been occurring, and I'm just would like to sit down with other people in the town and look at, shall we say, additional and other ways of looking at what we mean by business development in, or economic development in Littleton in the 21st century, which is very, very different than it was frankly 10 years ago. Very different. Opportunities for the town are very different, the kind of businesses that can survive in our current economy, which we're just recovering, as you know, from, or allegedly recovering from a real downturn, but what's happening at an accelerating rate is rapid change, and I think that Littleton is in a very fortunate position, because we don't have proportionally as many as empty spaces as Acton and Concord do. So I'm hoping not to emulate them in any shape or form, they're not the models for Littleton. We can, we can strike out a Ronin, I believe, successfully.
Thank you.
I enjoyed reading this. It's a pretty in-depth analysis of things. As I was trying to call from it, you talked many places here, one relating back to the other you just, you just did about the need to preserve the character of the community, which is reflected very strongly in the old plan. I was part of that plan, I know that was very, very strong. And, and moving ahead with things like economic development, and we're going to talk about later housing and that sort of thing, just, you did a nice job of analyzing it all, but I didn't get a read of where you were with it. And I'd sort of like to know if you had, you know, what you think about the goal to preserve the small-town character and how we can blend that with the need for small business development, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, first of all, I think my first task is to do a lot more listening, because remember, I'm a member of a steering committee, and setting policy could only come after, anyone on there is going to have to listen and learn. What I've picked up so far is mainly what we call the factors that are not necessarily within Littleton's control. In other words, I think looking at external forces or external factors has probably been more influential in my current thinking than actually trying to dig deeper into what's going on within Littleton, mainly because there are parts of Littleton, I'm, I just, for example, this weekend did a tour of I just, for example, this weekend did a tour of basically some historic houses, homes in Littleton, rediscovered the fact the Underground Railroad used to be running through Littleton, and the fact that this kind of fact, this kind of thing probably is known, just taken for granted by everyone in town, yet it's not part, yet part of our forward character. It's not... If you think of Littleton, you don't think of Littleton as a historic site yet. That's maybe something that should be thought about. But more importantly, the day of the small... What I'm impressed by in talking to people who invest, people who build buildings, people who do development in a serious way, is that if you want to look at the point as an example of what can be done, it is... It's a prelude, a hint, that the businesses that can make it, that attract attention, that get the investment, have a much larger footprint than might be, shall we say, comfortable in what I think most residents that I can listen to would be comfortable with in, let's say, the common area. I just don't see big box stores as in Littleton's future. Foot traffic is not characteristic of Littleton. It's road traffic. That tells you where economic development with businesses might go. So there are the businesses that make a difference today are primarily those that offer service. I mean, I'm aware that the Rotary Club, and there are many smaller, maybe no more than 10 or 15 members, businesses that are in insurance, technical assistance, lawyers, I mean, the list goes on. These are what are called services, professional services, everything from physicians to lawyers, the whole nine yards. Littleton is fairly well-populated with that. And the kinds of, shall we say, retail stores that most, a lot of people in town, especially those who've lived here for a long time, yearn for. My concern is that the external forces make those kind of businesses very difficult. It's not impossible to set up, number two, and they survive. If you want to see an example of one, and it's a take-home message there, is the Electronics Plus. If there's a small, that depends on walk-in, drive-in, but he's got a niche that's quite unique, quite different. And I think that those are the kinds of things that... And again, I'm speaking without further conversation, but those are the kind of things that maybe make more sense to think about in connection with Littleton than, shall we say, the traditional storefront stores that you now see struggling in Acton and even in Concord Center. I mean, I don't know if you noticed, but there's a lot churn there in spite of the fact that, boy, that they've got foot traffic, but that's churn. And you talk to investors there, they're sweating. That doesn't look good. I don't see Littleton should, has to emulate those towns. And the other thing that interests me very, very much is the great, what I call the great ghost of IBM. I come from an environment in which a large, high-tech company generally has around it within, oh, I would say, three months, regardless of the architecture, regardless of the real estate, regardless of sewage systems and all the rest. They have startups right around them because large companies that are in the advancing front end, IBM is one, generally have things around them, generally an investment hive. And I can't help but notice that the closest thing that IBM has ever spawned is up for the road in Westford, and that's about as far as they've ever gotten. And I think I understand why. That's another discussion. But I don't expect IBM, by the way, to come to Littleton's rescue, but it gives you an example of what happens when you get a business in town that looks good, smells good, and a little sentence trail off. So that's why I think what I'm looking for is more in-depth conversation with others who've lived here for a long time, other ideas to temper my own. But I think the change is needed in thinking about economic development and which direction we could go. I'll just give you one I've been looking into that intrigues me a lot, mainly because it seems like off the radar, and I'll stop, and that's Indian Hill. That's another... Other than high-tech, the other attractive are the arts. I'll just leave it there.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of meeting Mike. He lives in my neighborhood, so walking my dog, got to meet him and his wife, and we've had discussions about town and brings, as he stated, a different perspective for a new person coming in with a new first set of eyes. So I think it'd be a good fit. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
You want to do a motion on Mr. Zeldin? We'll bring up our next applicant. Or you want to do both at once? Both at once. Mr. Joseph.
Picochello.
Picochello.
This is a joint appointment, right?
Yes.
Okay, but they don't have a quorum, so the planning board doesn't have a quorum here. Okay.
So we can make the appointments, and the planning board's going to have to bring it up to their next meeting to do the interviews. And we were hoping to get them both done tonight, but the planning board doesn't have a quorum, so you'll have to come back. You and Mike will have to go back to the planning board so they can appoint you also. Board, Joseph, why don't you give us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on the master plan committee?
Sure. My name's Joe Picochello, as you know. Lived in Littleton for three years, and like most people, I feel I've spoken to, moved to Littleton because of the character, and that keeps coming up over and over again. And I'm on the common committee, and I think that would be a kind of a nice kind of fit between those two, sort of large picture and small picture. The common committee, I'm a landscape architect, so thinking in terms of character, you know, having a design perspective, I think will add to the steering committee. And then also, you know, I don't have an in-depth knowledge of all the different aspects that go into a master plan, because they're pretty complicated. I have some knowledge based on my background and my profession of what it does take to put together a holistic master plan and understanding all the various pieces that can go into it, should go into it, and understanding where to go to get that information. And then, of course, we already have one in 2002, so understanding how that needs to change, obviously, to fit into the 21st century. And one of the things I mentioned was climate change, I think, is a big thing that actually doesn't show up in the 2002 plan. I think that's probably a new piece that needs to be looked at to understand how it's going to influence the town in the next 10, 20, 30 years. You know, there's the economic, of course, and I think connectability via, you know, being able to walk, making a more walk-in community needs to be addressed maybe a little bit more. And I just want to be part of kind of looking forward and seeing where the town can go.
Right. Mr. Vella.
You mentioned the common committee. In fact, when you were here for confirmation on that, he's on senatorial confirmation hearings.
No, no. They have Board of Selectmen appointments, but you're close.
Yeah. This time subject to planning board concurrence.
Yeah, right, subject to.
Send it over to the other chamber.
Very still, you gave a real good in-depth on some of the things you were thinking. You reiterated some of them here tonight, and I think, as you said, the way you want to bring some of it together. And again, a fresh face also. Three years is certainly very new. You've had other experiences, now coming to town and seeing what's good here, what you like to see improved, what you've seen good in other places. I think that'll be all very helpful. And that evening, you said you were volunteering for this one, too, and I think you had my vote, so you surely had my vote. Thank you.
There's one thing about what you wrote that, and you said it's new to the process, climate. So how do you see the climate change as... I mean, what impact does that have?
Well, there's a lot of waterways in town, and, you know, there's going to be a lot more rain or faster deluges, not necessarily more rain, but the patterns are going to change. And so where we thought we could develop before might not make sense. Also, there's houses where now it's a new game in terms of, you know, how do you handle them? How do you, you know, when there's events, what do we need to do to plan for that? So it's sort of thinking of it short-term and then, of course, long-term in terms of developing and how we can and where we can put certain things and not put things now. You know, and there's people with expertise that understand that, that there's subconsultants in that that I think probably should be thought about this go-around that typically in the past have never been, you know, it's never been really something that we need to think about. And it is a cost item. I mean, it's something that could end up costing the town in years to come if we don't proactively think about it and approach it in a holistic way.
So essentially, part of this master plan, to your thoughts, would include an environmental assessment?
Yes.
Okay. Fair enough.
And thinking of that in terms of, again, how does the, what we can assume is going to happen in the future, how is that going to impact an environmental assessment? And how that also bleeds out into all the other various elements that could go into the master plan and a part of it?
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for coming forward, too, a new resident in town, again, another fresh set of eyes. I think your diverse background in regards to being a landscape architect will be real valuable when it comes to, you know, what we see or what the townspeople will see in the master plan, also in regards to, you know, open space and recreation and that type of stuff. So I think you'd be a great fit. What brought you to Littleton?
Well, I mean, it's sort of the checklist, right? It's got the schools. It's got... It's a nice town. I have relatives that were here before me. And there is a piece of property that I just absolutely fell in love with. It's in the Bumblebee. And, you know, it's that simple, really. It's just a great place, and I like the people.
It's good to hear.
And, yeah, we were coming from a very different Belmont. It's just a very different type of community, both spatially and economically. And this just fit nicely. I think it was a great thing to do.
Fantastic, fantastic. Again, tonight, it was supposed to be a joint appointment with the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. The Planning Board doesn't have a quorum here, so you'll be invited, I'm sure, to the Planning Board's next meeting, and hopefully after we make our vote here, they'll vote in affirmative also, so.
I think procedurally, our vote should be pending the concurrence of the planning board.
Subject to concurrence of the planning board, sure. Then I would look for a motion with that reflection.
Do you want that caveat in there? Okay. Move the Board of Selectmen, vote to appoint Michael Zeldin and Joseph Iclagrelo, excuse me, contingent upon endorsement also by the Planning Board, to the Master Plan Update Steering Committee.
To an indefinite.
For an indefinite term.
Seconded. They're moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, welcome back. And thank you, Joe, and thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Now, you'll see if you appreciate that we did this.
I had to get that indefinite term in there, too, just so you both know, okay?
Nobody told me about that indefinite term. Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment on that?
Sure.
Glad to have these two gentlemen on the steering committee with us and you guys. It's going to have a great mix of longtime residents and newer residents, people with technical background and architectural background. It seems like we're going to have a great, great mix on this board. Hopefully, by the time it's complete, we'll have a full dichotomy of what the town looks like. As a 38-year resident of this town, I'm almost a townie, but not quite there yet. We still need some...
Townies would disagree with you, Coach.
You have a quick day. My father always said that about Harvard, after about 30 years in Harvard, he said, "I still can't be a townie."
Well, thank you all.
Thanks. Okay. 5A, we're going to be talking about the Housing Production Plan, presentation by MAPC, adoption of plan, submission to the DHCD.
There we go. And you can just advance some of the...
Yep.
With those.
Great. Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. Good?
Welcome.
Thanks for having me. Good evening. I'm Jennifer Raitt. I'm the Assistant Director of Land Use Planning and the Chief Housing Planner at the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. We're the regional planning agency for Metro Boston. We've been working with the town for almost the past year on the development of a housing production plan. The plan was just adopted by the Planning Board last Thursday night, and so now I'm here tonight to talk with you about the plan and to complete the remainder of the process. So tonight, I'm going to walk through just a summary of the plan and what we did, what we learned, and some information about some of the implementation steps. I think that in your packets, you have sort of the executive summary as well as a lot of the things that I'm going to be talking about in this presentation. So happy to take questions either during or after.
Thank you.
So housing production plans emerged out of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40B. Plant production is basically a way for communities to manage their own growth in the context of what they think is appropriate in their community while also meeting local needs. And as part of that process, the housing production plan goes through basically four steps. First part is a comprehensive housing needs and demand assessment, as in taking a look at what are the critical housing needs in the community. Some residents might have greater needs than others, and I'm going to get into that, what that means for Littleton, in a moment. And then housing demand is basically what is the projected demand for housing, and then what types of housing is needed to fulfill that demand. In this case, we project out to 2030, but the plan itself is good for five years. So just to give you the context. The second step is to then analyze some of the development constraints, what might be holding back developers from being able to develop in the community, or other constraints, administrative, non-administrative, legal, otherwise, as well as looking at opportunities, where there might be some opportunities to develop new housing and then different types of housing as well. And then the third piece is basically based upon what we learned from the housing needs and demand assessment, and then also with an analysis of some of the constraints, what are some realistic goals and strategies that we can carry forward through an implementation plan process? And who are the responsible entities, and in what timeframe roughly could some of those things be done? It is a guide, a guidance document overall. So when you see the goals and strategies, and they say things like, "Adopt zoning changes," this is not a zoning change. It's simply guidance to say, here are some of the action steps that the town could realistically take to move forward this housing agenda. And then the fourth piece that's required under 40B as part of the planned production process is to identify actual sites to encourage potential housing development. So we were asked, and we're very grateful for working with Keith Bergman, as well as Marin Toolhill, who could not be here this evening, from the Planning Board and Planning Department, as well as others who have participated throughout this process, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about that in a second. Asking us to come in and help to essentially, there's no quotes here, but to control the town's 40B destiny. It's kind of been the...
That was my quote.
That's... I'm quoting Keith Bergman. Maybe some of you have also said the same thing. The reason being that the town has experienced some fluctuations in the subsidized housing inventory, which is basically an inventory that measures how much housing you have in Littleton that is then listed on the state's subsidized housing inventory. In this case, affordable housing under 40B means affordable to those who are low or moderate income, so earning at or below 80% of area median income. So your subsidized housing inventory in Littleton has fluctuated, and I'm going to explain a little bit about that. Right now, you're in a good position. You have, the 40B inventory is also based upon the 2010, the decennial census, so it will change again in 2020. So based upon 2010 census, the year-round housing units were 3,443. So therefore, 10% of that would be 345 units that need to be deed restricted. Otherwise, you would be subject to 40Bs, which is under the Comprehensive Permit Law allowable as part of that process. For 2020, the projections show that you might have up to 3,900 housing units. So therefore, the new projected need for affordable housing would be at least 390 units. Now, the situation has changed a bit, and I'm going to talk about why, in part related to 15 Great Road, that particular development, and a host community agreement that the Board of Selectmen actually made in 2013 with that developer, I believe, the developer. Yes. Flustered there for a second. And I think that that has an impact on your inventory because of what it states in that agreement, as well as other potential fluctuations that happen as a result of term restrictions. A deed restriction carries with it some term limits, some of them do, not all of them. Some units that you create for affordable housing last in perpetuity, which basically means 99 years. Sounds like it lasts forever, but it's really 99 years. Or they might have a term limit like 40 years, or 20 years, or 30 years. They all kind of vary. So you have some units that are subject to expire. So you see on this slide noting that 58 of them are technically set to expire in differing years. And this is, again, looking a little bit forward. Whereas 373, many of them are through the Housing Authority but not limited to the Housing Authority, are therefore affordable in perpetuity. And with, looking at the projections based upon your current census, which is that counting all of the units on Great Road, which I think is 14, 14 affordable homeownership units through 15 Great Road, you would then go up a bit to 12.92%. You're currently at 12.5% roughly. With the new base, if you count in the 2010 census, you can see that you would then go down a little bit to 11.41%. This is not counting any new growth, by the way, of potentially adding units to the inventory. But then you can see that what I was talking about with the expiring terms of other contracts, the certain percentage of units that might fall from your inventory, you would go down below 10% again.
So if we do nothing?
If you do nothing.
Yeah.
Correct. And so the host community agreement actually has some limits in it, based upon the potential for, and please, Keith, step in any time, the conversion of units from ownership to rental.
Right. Contractually, the host community agreement says that we have to have 100 units at 15 Great Road that we can count on the subsidized housing inventory. Initially, we had 190 that we could count when they were all rental. There was a revision that went, that was approved, which was 144 rentals and 56 owner-occupied. They're reduced from 190 down to 158, the number that we actually get to count on the subsidized housing inventory. Contractually, though, in the host community agreement, the developer or owner could go down as low as 100 countable ones. And what these scenarios show is, if that happened, if the, through a future amendment to 15 Great Road before a future zoning board of appeals, if the, if the count, if the number of countable units at 15 Great Road were to be reduced to the contractual minimum of 100, what would that mean? And under the 2010 census, we're okay. We stay above. Under the 2020 census, we fall slightly below, three, three units below. And once those expiring use permits go away in the middle of the next decade, then we're lower still. So all of these things point to the need to be, I'd say moderately proactive in identifying what affordable units we can add to the inventory so that we don't fall below 10%.
And the row, thank you, Keith, the row on this chart on the slide that says over/under, that's the over or under number of units that you need as part of that 10% of your total year-round housing inventory. So under these different scenarios, different units will fall off and therefore sink you further below the 10% year-round limit. So that's just sort of an introduction to somewhat the reason why we're here, as well as controlling the 40B destiny, as well as illustrating how tenuous it is in terms of achieving the goal and maintaining it. And so what we've done through this process is identify, again, looking at the needs, which I'm going to talk about in one second, and looking at the constraints, what are some realistic goals to move forward? So we've developed the plan over the course of the year. We had a public visioning forum in June, which some of you attended, and also the strategy session in September, which also some of you attended. And then we developed the draft plan in connection with the town, Keith, as well as Steph from the Planning Department, and also the Planning Board's input in that process. The plan then has to go through an adoption process locally before it is then approved and submitted to the state for approval. So the first step of that was Planning Board adoption, and the second step is the Board of Selectmen. And then, again, once the HPP is approved by the state, it is good for five years. So as part of the first forum, we looked at housing needs and demand, and we asked residents who were in attendance at that meeting, as well as through a survey, what sort of issues they're having at different stages in their life cycle. So this chart is just illustrating for you the kinds of things that we've heard. You know, I'm in my 20s, I'm single, I'm looking to develop my career, what kind of housing opportunities might exist for me here in Littleton, or all the way to, I'm in my 60s, I'd really like to retire, it would be nice to keep my home, but, you know, if I could really, I really want to stay in Littleton because of things that people had said previous to me coming up here. I love the character of the community, I love the open spaces, I love other things about the town, the common, et cetera. So I want to downsize. But what are the opportunities for me to really, realistically do that in this town? Et cetera. So looking at that, as well as looking at projected needs, so Metrofuture is the regional plan, that's what that's called, and your projected, your increase from the census 2000 to 2010 was about 9% of your population. The population is projected to grow under this Metrofuture trends, and these are projections that my agency conducts as part of the transportation planning process and other state planning processes. The projections would show that you would grow about 30% by 2030, again, based upon current trends and based upon the kinds of demand that we're seeing in the region. The projections, though, are showing that you would increase in population in really a particular category of age cohorts. And that age cohort predominantly is in the 65 to 74 group, age 65 to 74, growing by 151%, outpacing, and the 75 and/or better would grow by about 149%. Whereas you can see.
We just still look at there.
Stay in place, yes. Other populations are declining. Now, some of this is reflected across the MIPC region, which is the 101 communities in and around Boston. But other communities sometimes show greater growth of aging than others. Littleton happens to show more significant trend in terms of older households, again, based upon projections. So when you look at that, those groups who are aging and the groups that might be living in Littleton, as well as who's living here now and who's attracted to the town, the current housing inventory might not meet some of the future needs. And those could be for aging in place, to more accessible units, to units that are more affordable to first-time buyers, a lot of different things. And so we looked at, you know, this chart is just showing you your current housing's inventory and how many units are in each structure. So a lot of single-family dwellings, that's not surprising. And 87% of units in Littleton are actually owner-occupied, 13% are rental. The backside of that is not just about your inventory, but about sale prices, what's affordable, as well as rental prices, what's affordable. So your sales prices, again, like other places across the region, have continued to rise, not a bad thing, but can be a pressure point for people who are trying to enter the market. However, your rents are moderate compared to the whole, the region surrounding you, so some of the neighboring communities, about 1,100 per month. That's a gross rent, so that's actually taking into account all different units with different bedroom sizes. So income is rising, even though you're lacking in some of your inventory, but a lot of people are still in need in the community, and that's part of what the Housing Needs and Demand Assessment looks at, what is the demand, and then what's the need. There are a number of Littleton households, 20% of them, who are considered low-income, and 520 of them are earning below 80% of that area median income. I mentioned that that's kind of the trigger for being income-eligible under these, this construct and framework of affordable housing. 45% of those households are elderly. And then there's also a metric about cost burden. So when you're paying more than 30% of your gross household income, you would technically be considered cost burden. A severe cost burden happens when you are paying 50% or more of your gross household income. I realize, and I talk about this issue in greater depth in other communities, some people choose a greater cost burden to simply live in a community. This slide is showing you and capturing what's happening with the low and moderate income populations, who may not have a choice but to accept such a cost burden. And you can see the differentiation in terms of owner versus renter, as well as elderly, non-family, and then also middle-income households who are suffering some cost burden in town. So with that, I'm going to just quickly walk through the goals and strategies that we outlined in the plan document, and then I'll take any questions. The first goal, which is, could not be stated more over and over again, is to maintain Littleton subsidized housing inventory above 10% through 2020 and beyond, so where you are at now and further. That means that you want to make sure that you keep stock on your current subsidized housing inventory, as well as potentially encourage some new development. And by way of encouragement, you could entertain what is called a friendly 40B, which is described more so in the plan. But quickly, I think there's a conversation happening right now with the Planning Board, and we'll proceed this conversation where there is a developer who might be interested in working with the town on such a concept. And so I'll let that happen when I'm, when I'm done with you. The second goal is to continue to build community awareness of housing issues and activities. There are actually programs out there that the town might help to better connect residents with, including a number of different programs and opportunities, also educating residents, as well as your boards and commissioners about unmet housing needs, as well as the kinds of goals that we're talking about in this plan and their role in that. And then a companion to that would be fair housing laws and other legal requirements that boards and commissioners may need to know about, and ensuring some cross-town board coordination and alignment on those activities. So there's a lot of opportunity there to kind of align and make sure we all line up on these efforts. The goal three is about addressing those unmet housing needs through programming and development. I mentioned the programs for people who want to age in the community, as well as identifying new sites for development. We have listed some of those in the plan document, as I mentioned, that's required under the plan. And then also maybe talking more with developers of housing about the local housing market here, and their thoughts about how to better participate in what's happening here in Littleton. The fourth goal is about adopting zoning changes that would therefore advance affordable housing production. The suite of things covers everything from an accessory dwelling unit, which is an add-on to a single-family home typically. I know that this conversation has come up in the past, but this is about amending your existing bylaw, as well as amending another existing bylaw that's talked about, cluster zoning, looking at overlay zoning districts where you don't change the underlying zoning, but you entertain an overlay that might encourage mixed-use or mixed-income housing, amending the Village Common District, consideration of an inclusionary housing bylaw that might set a threshold for production of affordable housing as part of another development, and so on. The fifth one is to build local capacity for housing development. I've just talked about a number of different goals and their companion strategies. You can't do it without some support. So potentially looking at leveraging your existing Community Preservation Act, which you can do through administrative funds, or other town funds to hire a housing specialist, somebody who can really concentrate on these efforts, either part-time or full-time, to really help the town to continue to advance these initiatives. Second one is establish an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Under state law, the town of Littleton is allowed to adopt a municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It's basically a fiduciary entity that would administer funds just for affordable housing. Exploration of existing and new partnerships, which include regional housing partnerships, as well as working with the Littleton Housing Authority, potentially nonprofit housing developers, and continuing to look at the funding sources around affordable housing. The last goal is about promoting healthy housing. People who want to age in this community might, and others coming into the community, might want to age in appropriate locations where they're, where they have access to amenities, where there's minimization of exposure to any outdoor, indoor pollutants, and/or energy-efficient or other types of units. So those are some of the ways that we think about promoting healthy housing. So in terms of the plan adoption process, we had the formal review by the Planning Board, as I mentioned, last Thursday. On December 11th, they voted to adopt the plan. They also briefly entertained discussion around advancing one of the strategies, which was related to the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the formal review by your board. And then we would like to submit this plan for DHCD's review and approval this month. And as I said, the approved plan is about a 30-day process, and then good for five years. My colleague, who's not here tonight, is Karina Milchman, who also worked quite a bit on this document, so I've got her name on the slide. So happy to entertain any questions. Thank you very much for listening.
Thanks, Jen.
You're welcome.
Questions from the board?
The, I wasn't at the discussion with the Planning Board, that they talk about changing any bylaws or amending any. I know in previous years, we spoke about possibly changing the bylaw for subdivisions so that we can incorporate a affordable housing piece to any type of subdivision coming before the plan, the Planning Board?
They spoke a great deal about the different recommendations in the plan, but did not make any sort of action, or they had discussion about it, but there wouldn't be any action at the meeting. So they were interested.
There did seem to be, there did seem to be interest in, is it the inclusionary?
The inclusionary and the overlay districts.
Yeah, which would either produce, it would produce a financial amount?
Right. It would create, potentially, instead of a unit, it could create a payment in lieu of a unit, which would then be, a payment would go into the companion Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So that was part of that discussion. But they had discussed previous time, in general, broadly, the recommendations. But no, that.
But to try to get the market to produce some of it by, you know, you know, if you have a zoning provision.
Right.
That says if you want to do something more, if you want to have it be a more dense project, that you would be required to either have it be an affordable unit, or if it's not going to be affordable, pay an amount to the town for us to use for affordable housing purposes. So it sounded like there was great interest in the Planning Board in pursuing that.
It's a good document. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I would do want to thank Jen, Dan, the rest of the folks, because we had some rather long meetings at the middle school as we got together and went through these goals, supporting strategies, facilitated this very well, offered guidance at appropriate times to keep us on track. So very well done. Thank you.
You're welcome.
A lot of work did go into this.
Thanks for your input.
I have a couple of questions. As we, I'll sort of start at the beginning, as we strive to seek our 10%, or not fall below our 10%, the effect of general market development is a negative, correct?
Essentially, because you're adding to your denominator. If you're not, if that addition does not include affordable units, then yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so if we continue as we are, we're generally.
or not fall below our ten percent, the effect of general market development is a negative, correct?
Essentially, because you're adding to your denominator.
So that you're...
If you're not, if the, if that addition does not include affordable units, then yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so if we continue as we are, with general development of houses that are, well, you're the realtor, up there in price, certainly, most people are not seeking affordable, or in particular, housing for the elderly, senior, senior citizens, then...
Older people.
Then we're actually working to, against our goal.
It's, it's a little...
Development, right now, development is essentially unchecked by the will of developer to build what they believe will be market, market-ready and profitable for them, obviously. So, I don't, I, I understand that the goal ought to be turning that so that it is affordable, and particularly affordable for seniors, based on what you've done here. But I don't see that, what I've read in this plan, the second time I've read it, I don't see that really pointed out, that that's where we have to go. And, so that, that's just a question and comment onto that. We talked about the plan, it goes in, and it's good for five years. Is, and is that plan then binding to the town? In what ways is it binding?
Okay, let me go through your questions. So, it would be in the best interest, what I am saying tonight, is that it's in the best interest of the town to keep ahead of new growth by including affordable housing. So, yes, if you then had new growth without any affordable units included, you are somewhat falling behind, because you're adding to that denominator without including, without also moving up the, the column related to housing units that are on the subsidized housing inventory, so that answers that question. On the priority populations, being older people, we don't specify about older people. We do talk about the inclusion of units that are accessible, and then also to talk about another priority population, which includes the elderly or older people. But not necessarily housing specifically just for those populations. There are other ways to go about making sure people can age in the community. So it doesn't just have to be new development, it could also be preserving where people are living right now. So making modifications to homes, for example, so that people can live comfortably. Those mechanisms are talked about in the, in the...
We do see that we're going to have a disproportionate growth in that demand on housing.
Right.
For senior populations. Okay.
And then the, the...
Can we stick on that one for a minute?
Oh, sure.
Because it gets, I mean, we can get down some pretty deep rabbit holes. For the senior population to grow, and coincidentally to require more housing, means people are moving into town, in a particular demographic. So if we use the senior demographic, I can say that certainly some people may decide to sell and downsize and want to remain in town, and that's certainly a strong possibility. But I dare say, a greater percentage of the growth in the senior demographic is aging in place.
Right.
Not an influx.
That's right.
From out of, out of Littleton.
But therefore, they're occupying homes that might be potentially available to a newer family moving in. So there might be other types of housing that you need to create to accommodate the full population.
But then the eligibility for affordable housing, too, is not just simply, I don't make enough, if you might correct, if you have an asset that's of a substantial amount, there's considerations there. Like cannot own a house as a primary residence, and then move into affordable housing at the same time, is that correct also?
Depends, depends upon the program. Depends upon their asset limits. Sometimes they make accommodations and waivers for older people.
That's, and that's it. There are some certain rules, but there are waivers, which means that the certain rules apply more often than not, most likely, and the waivers are the exceptions.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, for lower income.
I think that, what you said is true, but this aging in place thing makes a presumption that they can afford to stay in their house. And with an increase in taxes and increase in property valuation, we go to what you were talking about, the burdened population, that's financially burdened by all this.
I understand, the, the math part of it's easy. There's a lot of the policy, and then how we go about encouraging and incentivizing also. And then we have to start asking ourselves the question, is it our responsibility to incentivize a builder to do something? You know, I'd say, let's save that for another time. But to the specifics of what we're talking about this evening, as you say now, there's an asset test also.
Right.
So that, you know, house poor is a term that's been used, you know, and it's not just elderly, it's demographic. You have a lot of property, and a lot of things are tied up in it, but income or disposable income are, is somewhat limited. So the concern could be, too, is that now, that very expensive home, that for whatever reason, somebody chooses to leave it, is an asset that's there. And when it's sold, there's now liquid assets that are available. And whether or not they can now apply to these particular programs becomes something else that we have no control over either. So I'm, the, the only way I want to go with this right now, and I'm plenty content to stop at this point, is that when we start thinking about policies, and then incentive programs, encouragement programs, whatever we may want to term it, and we have an opportunity to speak a little bit later this evening about a particular program, or at least a possible project in town, is how do we go about that? What is the real problem, and how we go about solving it? It's easy to say, you know, people can't afford to stay in the house anymore. Now let's give them affordable housing. It, it's not that simple.
And I think that talking with providers who, like social service providers, your council on aging, and others who work with those populations, might be a helpful follow-up and next step. There are other next steps as well that are outlined in the plan, but I think that that would be a starting point. This is not an endpoint. This is a guidance document.
No, I...
So I think more conversation is definitely needed, particularly on the point that you've raised.
Jen highlights that greatly. And there's so much other, as far as recommendations and possible strategies, that go beyond just affordable housing program, so, which is very helpful for us.
Good. The last question that you asked me, I'm sorry, is...
Well, it wasn't the last one. We sort of stopped at the...
Oh, well, the, the last one for now, was, are you legally bound?
Binding.
Yeah.
Is the plan once filed, are we bound to follow it?
No.
No.
It would behoove you to follow it.
We didn't follow the two thousand and five plan, we didn't do anything.
It would behoove you to follow it, but you are not legally bound to it. You are, if you gain certification of the housing production plan, which basically says you have certified that you've produced a certain number of units annually per year, that then creates a process where you can keep forty B comprehensive permit applications at bay. That then is a legally binding process?
If we're, if we're below ten percent.
If you're below ten percent. So only if you fell, fell back.
Yeah.
And, only if you fell back and then had a certified plan.
Right. And we currently don't need that protection. Hopefully, we will not, but just as an example...
Right.
With the rollercoaster ride that we run on with Fifteen Great Road, first, we were above ten percent when the ZBA issued its first approval. The building permits were not pulled within one year, so we fell below. Then the revised permit was issued, and the building permits followed in August of this year. Then we went back above. If the, if the, those units are not occupied within eighteen months of the building permit, and I'm not anticipating that won't happen, but if it did, then that would be a reason to fall back below ten percent.
But the, the legal, the legal issue doesn't happen unless those two things happen, the two other cases, so falling below and getting certified units. Okay.
Assisted living.
Mm-hmm.
There are various levels of that, where, you know, some of it is graduated even, but does that qualify?
In certain cases, yes, assisted living can qualify under the subsidized housing inventory. Has to go through a sort of a, a test process, because of the way that they count a group facility, but it's, it is an eligible unit.
So that would be something we'd want to work with potential developers of assisted living facilities to produce the environment that allows that to...
You could do that in problems, now, we worked with a New England Deaconess, that a assisted living unit that they constructed along with a nursing home had, we, we actually reached an agreement with them using CPA funds to fund up to nineteen affordable units at a hundred thousand dollars each in CPA funds, if they were deed-restricted as affordable. Ultimately, they chose to have about ten of those units be affordable, and the town paid a million dollars in CPA funds, but it was the same, but it was the result, that you had at a, you know, a New England Deaconess assisted living facility, you had X number of units that were deed-restricted as affordable, and they got, and they get counted on that community's inventory.
Yeah, so independent, congregate, assisted, that sort of spectrum, any of those could count, but have to go through the test process for eligibility on the inventory.
Okay, so, so my last point is relative to Goal Four.
Okay.
And as, as I look at that, there's nothing in there that is an incentive to the things we just talked about. Senior housing, affordable housing, any of those things. It looks like a goal to develop.
Mm-hmm.
And we got plenty of developers that want to develop in town. We want a housing plan that's going to develop to maintain the diversity we have in this community.
Mm-hmm.
So that was my only concern with Goal Four, is that...
Yeah.
It didn't take on any of the other positive things...
Yep.
That we're, we're trying to roll into.
So the, the, in the more descriptive part of the plan and the strategies, we talk about, in the overlay districts, that you could include, you know, age-restricted or other types of housing for older populations. The other one is the last item on Goal Four, which is adopt a bylaw that provides density bonuses for including senior and/or handicap-accessible units. So, so there might be other mechanisms that the town would need to further research to determine what's the best possible approach to amending the existing zoning bylaw. But those are the two ways in which we talk about it in the plan. It's not only that, because that was not what was discussed during the plan development, it's that and other things, as talking about housing development more broadly. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim, anything?
Just a couple of things. I look, we look back at the Host Agreement Act that we worked on for Fifteen Great Road, and thank God we did that, because we've already seen the ZBA change once, and we do have a guarantee of a hundred units. So we did a lot of, we had a lot of criticism come our way during that time period, but overall, that'll pay off.
But, and without that agreement, that the number would be fifty.
Right.
Because, because twenty-five percent of the total, there's two hundred units in that forty B, we would only get fifty countable units out, if, but for the, the host community agreement, which gives us twice that.
I think, too, something important that you pointed out when you talk about the, the ten percent, which is something that we're very conscious of, too, is that we have to be proactive and not sit back on, on what's already there. And I think it's a case of, too, of having to educate the town and the townspeople. Because even recently, at a town meeting, one of the, the planning board put forth something about accessory dwellings that was turned down, and people just had a certain reason that they didn't want to do it. And this is why we have to convince people that in the future, we have to be aware of this, because if we don't provide the, this kind of housing, Fifteen Great Road comes up again in two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-three, if we don't act in the, in the proper way. Overall, great work, took a long time.
Great, you're welcome.
Anything else?
Nope. Ready for motion?
Yep.
Okay, move that the board of selectmen vote to submit to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development for approval pursuant to seven sixty CMR fifty-six dot zero three four E. The town of Littleton's updated housing production plan prepared by Metropolitan Area Council and approved by the planning board on December eleventh, twenty fourteen.
Second.
Within the second, all those in panel?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very, very much, Jen.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I see Mr. Fields here, and Attorney Gould. Keith, one question, though.
Yep.
We can have them start now, then...
Yeah, they, yeah, they can start. I think they're just going to give us a briefing. There's no vote tonight, and so we should be able to get it done, squeeze them in...
Okay.
Before our eight fifteen public hearing.
For the public to know, the housing, local initiative program, fifteen eleven Goldsmith Street, Matthew Field, perfect timing, Matt.
How am I, yeah? Just got out of Taekwondo. Just what I need, huh?
It's not a planning, it's not a planning word. We have no...
He's got better ones.
Okay.
I'll put this right up here on the wall.
Yes. Correct the best bet.
So, the public know that the property that Mr. Field was talking about is directly behind the Baptist church.
This is the existing, and that's what we're proposing.
So yes.
Good evening. Cheryl Gould for the applicant, Michael Field, Matthew Field, they're developers, they do businesses, M and M Realty Trust. They own the property at five dash eleven...
Five through eleven.
Goldsmith Street, that's, as you stated, right on Goldsmith Street, it is right behind the church there, and it's, I call it the two green buildings, I've always called it, the two green buildings there, right now used for business. The Fields thought it would be beneficial to the town to have housing in that area where residents could walk to downtown, and that's in keeping with the master plan precisely. They've done initial engineering and testing on the site, and they've had this engineer place on the site fourteen two-story townhouse units that will fit on the site exactly as the buildings are now, and take very little more space than the existing buildings now. It's their proposal, it was their proposal, to offer to create three of them as affordable, three out of the fourteen as affordable. As we started to talk about it with the community, it was asked if they would consider making this a project that would fit within the DHCD guidelines, so that the units could be counted in the SHI inventory for the town. And as we investigated that further, Department of Housing and Community Development stated that if four of the units, that is twenty-five percent of them, were offered as affordable as that term is defined by Department of Housing and Community Development, and the units were retained as rentals, which is their plan, then all fourteen could be counted in the town's SHI. We think that's beneficial to the town for the reason that, as you know, we're trying to be proactive in maintaining our numbers with all of the housing starts that have happened, even though Omni put us up over that limit, we have to remain proactive to make sure that we don't get back under the ten percent. And this is an ideal location for it, it's in keeping with the master plan, it provides some necessary, sorely needed, housing options to people in the town of Littleton. In order to create the fourth unit, the applicant has asked if the town would consider donating two hundred thousand dollars from the CPA money to the project, because as I said, they were willing to do three units if they're on accord affordable. There's no requirement that they donate any as affordable, this plan is in keeping with your new mixed-use overlay district. So they don't need the affordability component to get the project done, but they've wanted to do that. So one request is that the town consider, through the CPA funds, for housing specifically to allow two hundred thousand to be donated or contributed to the project. And the other request is, we will be asking maybe for some prorated permit waiver fees, again, so that we can get four out of the fourteen units to be affordable. But other than that, it's a totally non-public finance project. Now, I've spoken with DHCD, and they tell me that there are two ways to get all of the units counted. One way is to do a lip, which is called a friendly forty B, and that would require the developer to get the approval of the selectmen to go forward in a friendly fashion, and then bring the whole thing before the zoning board of appeals. That's pretty costly and time-consuming and unnecessary. The other way of getting all fourteen units counted on the inventory is to do what's called local, local action units, to create these units as LAUs, local action units. And again, we can do that because our local bylaw permits there to be apartment residential units in this area of town. So if we did this under the local action unit process, then there's a series of paperwork documents to be filed, they get submitted to DHCD. When DHCD is done looking at them, they'll present back a regulatory agreement and a deed rider for the selectmen to review, and when the selectmen review it and sign it, then it will be acceptable to DHCD as an affordable housing project to be counted. So if you have any questions, I'll leave it to the developers to answer technical questions.
Good. All right, just, as far as the layout, the, what's in our package is a little bit different, Matt, than like, than you show up there. It doesn't have the L. It's, it's kind of disconnected, just...
Yeah.
What's, what was the change?
Our original intention was to have two separate buildings with a walkway here.
Yeah.
It wouldn't, we'd be required to have some variances for the offsets to the lot line. So what we're doing is we're pulling it this way, making it one contiguous building, and then we're having fronts on a couple of units over here, and then the front's here.
Okay.
We have, we have more than enough room around the back to make it presentable.
And, and the offset on the, by Goldsmith Street, the building that's currently... the building that's currently there?
Yes, sir.
Is that more or less?
It's a little bit closer.
It's closer?
Yep.
I think it was 25 feet in this, your rough drawings here?
Yep.
Yes.
What is it now? Just, I don't know.
32 or 33.
Yeah, it's right here.
How many is it?
There's an existing conditions and behind it is the new conditions.
Yeah, this is 47 and...
Is that the offset to, is that to the street, Matt?
That's to the street, not to the property line.
The existing building on now, the office called it 47?
Yes, actually to Goldsmith Street. And it's moving it to 25.2.
And that's to the lot line on that, right?
Yeah, to the lot line. So I don't know the exact number.
Okay.
It is closer.
Okay.
But we can get you the exact number.
Okay. Traffic coming in and out of there. Is there any plans to do any type of traffic study for people getting in and getting out?
We do not meet any of the requirements to do a traffic study. We do not trigger anything.
How many of our commercial are there right now?
There are eight commercial units and two residential and a garage.
So the footprint for the building right now, you know, if you take those three structures to square footage, any idea of how much more this building will be?
We are decreasing it from 75% to approximately 72%.
Imperfect.
We're decreasing it.
Okay.
With our proposed plan.
All right. I guess the only other question that I have is, and I know these are just rough drawings, is the architecture of the buildings and how they look?
It's, we have, we know that we're going to build two-story townhouses with two bedrooms, a full bath upstairs. We're going to change the roof lines. We actually had one building that had, it looked terrible. So we had the engineer draw different roof lines with some cane levering on the front of them to make it village.
So it's not, you know, make it one panel.
That was my biggest concern.
Give your input and run with that to our architect.
And they might offset, each unit might offset between like a foot just to break up the continuous siding. Just give it a little more character.
More of a village type.
Village feel, yeah. That's all I have.
I have some to put.
So we were talking about four affordable units and we just heard that perpetuity is 90 years. We just heard that. What term are you proposing as far as a deep restriction for affordable?
You want to?
You can.
Oh. Initially, I would propose 20 years, but they'll go longer than that. They want to keep these in.
We're going to keep this for the family. We'll work with you.
Okay, so a period longer than 20 years would be acceptable?
That would be acceptable. And if the town contributes to the, with CPA funds, we are very humble and would work with you on a longer period.
I have to interrupt because we have to interrupt. We have three hearings coming up in a row. 8:15, 8:20, 8:35 that I have to get through. So soon as those are done, if you can hang around for other questions.
Sure.
Is it okay?
Yeah.
Thanks.
You want us to take this down?
No, don't take it down. You might want to.
Don't go away.
Okay, legal notice. Littleton Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, December 15, 2014, at 8:15 in Littleton Town Hallroom 103, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass. On the Act and the Application under Mass General Law, Chapter 138 of Act 3 Incorporated Josie Nogieria, Manager Doing Businesses, Act 3 Restaurant, 529 King Street, Littleton, Mass. The applicant has submitted a revised plan for the purpose of the premises located at 529 King Street. Specifically, the applicant proposes removing the bar seating and replacing it with table seating. Comments thereon be submitted by writing to the Board of Selectmen Town Administrator's Office, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, by noon Friday, the 12th, or in person at the hearing. All those parties are invited to attend Littleton Board of Selectmen. Do we have the applicant here?
I represent the applicant.
Well, then you're in the right place.
I don't know where they are.
I think this was just...
The Board had requested this amendment when you issued the, conditionally issued the license for the current year with the understanding that the bar use would not be included in the, it would be table service rather than bar use so that we didn't run afoul of what the sprinkler restrictions are in the state sprinkler requirements. So in allowing the permit to be issued for this year with the agreement not to use it for bar use, the Board asked that we receive a formal application to amend the license to eliminate where it said bar use and substitute it for table service. So we have that revised plan. That's the subject of the hearing. The other step that's been taken consistent with that is that the applicant has filed or that the property has filed for the waiver from the State Board that deals with sprinkler licenses. And in the event that a waiver is granted, then we would expect from discussions that there would, may yet be another amended application for the license for this property. But right now, where we are, is looking at table service only, no sprinkler required, and to formally amend the liquor license to that extent. And the other hearing that's being heard tonight, the other licenses on entertainment, which would limit to 12 uses in the calendar year, which is the other way not to run afoul of the sprinkler requirement.
And this is the second part of that hearing too. Entertainment pursuant to Mass General Law, 140, Section 122, to allow music performances on New Year's Eve, January 7th, January 21st, January 28th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m.
January 14th.
Yeah, 14th.
14th and 21st. So that's the second part of that with this hearing.
So the bar stools have been removed. They only have table service right now in the bar. And they're seeking these limited entertainment licenses. And that was with the discussion with the fire chief and the fire department that they are allowed to have 12 by permit annually through this board. And until the Sprinkler Appeals Board decides. Just for your information, the sprinklers are triggered after you get an occupancy over 100. And they're at about 107 by calculations on paper. They're not really able to house 107 and that's the basis for the appeal. So I think it's marginal at best.
Anything else on the board?
That all seems plenty fine.
We're seeing it from the same songbook here. Between SAP and the establishment.
We also, Chief?
Only 12 times a year.
Okay, we're also up with the chief too.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Move the second to close the hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Delegitation?
We just closed your hearing, but you're about to get approval. So stay tuned.
Are we late? I thought it was 8:30.
No.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote as follows, relative to Act 3 Restaurant Incorporated Doing Businesses as Act 3, 529 King Street, Littleton. One, to approve an amendment to the retail restaurant license for all alcohol beverages licensed under Mass General Law, Chapter 138, alteration of the premises by removing bar seating and replacing with table seating. And two, to approve an entertainment license under Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 181, to allow live music performances in 2014 on New Year's Eve and in 2015 on January 7th, 14th, 21th, and 28th.
Second. Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Congratulations.
Well done. Well, thank you for an answer, right? Okay.
Taking reservations?
Yes, well, as of tomorrow.
Very good.
Nicely done.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sorry, sorry, really.
Okay, another public hearing. Littleton Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, December 15, 2014, at 8:25 in Room 103, Littleton Town Building, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass. To consider the application for common victims license as requested by Andrea Alvarado, Doing Businesses Littleton Cafe, to be located at 305 Foster Street, Littleton, Mass. Identified on the census map, R10, parcel 2-1. Comments thereon may be submitted in writing to the Selectmen Town Administrator's Office, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, by noon later than Friday, December 12th, or be in person at the hearing. All interested parties are invited to attend Board of Selectmen. Welcome Andrea.
Hello.
Before you expand, I just want to thank you for the addition of Littleton Cafe. I think it's made a nice addition to our town. It's a nice place to be.
It's so fun.
So now you're expanding. You want to explain?
I'm expanding to 305 Foster Street. It's a commercial kitchen. They actually contacted me. They have 300 people sitting in the building with no access to food. So they asked me to come in and I'm going for it. I'm trying.
For real, right?
It'll be open to the public too, not just for the people in the building.
Now, this would be a good addition to that area being down by railroad tracks. If you can attract the people where they hit the trains, it'd be.
I would love to grab those people on the way of the train.
How are the hours that you're proposing as opposed to the location now?
They're going to be the same, same hours. It's just breakfast and lunch, get in there at 6:00 in the morning and be out by 2:00 after lunch. Monday through Friday though, not going to do the weekend up there. Nobody's going to be there.
Questions from the board?
Said Cafe is great, dine there often.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All good.
Questions?
It's all good.
All right.
Move to close the hearing. Second.
Move this second to close the hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Very.
Delegitation?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, subsection 6, without classes, to approve application of Andrea Alvarado, Doing Businesses as Littleton Cafe, for common particular license for premises of 305 Foster Street.
Move to the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Are you going to clone yourself to be at each show?
I have plans. I have plans.
Good, good, good.
Thank you.
Andrea, when does it open? Andrea?
Yes.
When does it open?
January sometime.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next hearing's at 8:35, so maybe we can finish the discussion with Matt.
See ya. Thank you.
Sherry and Matt, if you want to come back right now, we have like eight, nine minutes before our next hearing. Maybe we can finish this up. Sherry, I have a question before I open it to everyone else. The last method you mentioned, I lost it now. Not the LIP.
LAU, Local Action Units. Local Action Units.
What's the process for local action? Is that something that the planning board does or something?
Right in the back.
If you just give me a minute, I can read it, run it right through. Because we allow apartments in a mixed-use zone in our zoning bylaw, what we have to do...
Excuse me, can I have a quiet please?
First obtain the permit from the planning board, which is the full process of site plan approval and all of the peer review. They've already sent it out to Green Engineering for period. And that's where all the things will be discussed about the set pack, the traffic impacts, the access and egress, and all of the drainage and stormwater calculations, plus the setback. Then we submit an application that's available on the DHCD website, which I've already downloaded, which really just answers the questions. Who's the planning board? Who's the, who are on the Board of Selectmen? And what are the units going to be like? We are required to use a qualified lottery agent, which adds a little bit of costs to the project because these have to be offered the same way as any other affordable units through the lottery process. Then we have to complete the regulatory agreement, which is done with any LIP, that we've done it with Omni. And you people would have, your board would have to participate in signing the regulatory agreement. And we have to propose the fair and marketable, the fair and affordable marketing and lottery plan and designate a monitoring agent. We have proposed that the monitoring agent be Littleton Housing Authority. And they would like very much to be the monitoring agent. She's already sent emails around.
Yeah, she's very proactive.
Very anxious to do this and be involved. Then...
She shows up at our meetings when we talk about affordable housing.
She's been very active and very supportive. Then we have to submit the current utility allowances, which we get from the local housing authority because they have the formula for what the utilities cost in this area. We submit a site plan showing an even distribution of the affordable units within the project. They don't like them clustered in, you know, the four affordables are in one place and all the markets are somewhere else. Submit the floor plan, submit the incorporation papers for the developer. Then we submit that entire package to all of you. And when you agree that this is what you want to do with this board, you sign their recommendation that the units be submitted to DHCD as local action units for approval. DHCD then approves and then all 14 units get counted. So it's paperwork.
More questions?
Yeah, just one please. If the structures existed today, what would be the market rate, ballpark?
I'm sorry, if they...
If the structures existed today, those apartments?
For the rental?
For the rental market, they'd be between 1,600 and 1,800.
And the affordable?
Yeah, that's what I think.
No, no, you'll call it, it's good enough. 60 to 18. And the affordable mass would be 1,525 is what you had in the paperwork?
The affordable rental price? They tell me that according to the numbers for 2014, which will change in 2015, they don't have those figures yet. The two-bedroom affordable price for this area, which is the Boston metropolitan area, according to DHCD, is 1,525 less any utilities that the developer or that the owner doesn't pay for. So if they have to pay their own electric or their own heat. And those utilities have a standard, which we have to get from the housing authority. So it's not what the actual utility bill is, but what is the standard for a two-bedroom unit. So I think Matt's calculated that it'll be more like 1,100 to 1,200 a unit, but those units will have to pay their own utilities.
That's for the affordable side.
For the affordable side.
When do you think you would have these online?
We have three houses to build right now. And I'm predicting it would be in June. It would start May and June.
And then it's like a, maybe a 14-month site, you know, completion for the whole project after that.
We've done all the septic, we've done all the testing. We have everything done.
You haven't been issued any permits or anything?
No, no, no. We just did all the deep holes and perks and they were all good. Wanted to make sure that we could fit it with the septic.
Plus that timeframe might work out with all the paperwork you have to go through.
That's right.
Because it's not going to happen overnight, that's.
No, not going to be built overnight either. I mean, it's a good-looking project.
Can you think you keep it with the village look? I think that'll be a big sell for the townspeople and the other boards affected. And what you missed right before you came in, we were talking about the housing and how do we keep the 10% and how we have to be proactive to keep it there, so it falls in the place. Mr. Crowley, have a question?
Yes, when Matt and his brother came before us on Thursday night in the plan, it, we unanimously agreed that this was a great fit for that area. It actually is what we, it's what we asked for in the town, when the town voted to change the zoning for that district, the village district, this is part of the village common district, to add mixed uses, to bring residential units into that downtown area. Because it's the residential units that create the commerce and the economy that that downtown area needs. These, Matt and his brother have hit the bullseye with this one.
Could have talked quite a bit in the past about foot traffic.
That's right. Now, this is how it happens.
Anything else from this board right now? Not at this time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for working with you. Thank you for working with you.
Yes, sir. We're ready.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Right on time.
Those are really good.
Yeah, Bergman, come on.
You're not allowed to accept these during the agenda item.
That's right. How long have we had those?
Have what?
Being right on time at eight thirty-five, the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, December fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, at eight thirty-five in room one oh three of the town office building, thirty-five Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass. To consider the application for common and particular license requested by Victoria Kinsey, manager of Fast Franks LLC, doing business as Fast Franks, to be located at one eighty-four Air Road, Littleton, Mass. Identified in the census map as R twenty-two parcel three dash zero. Comments thereon, they submitted, may be submitted in writing to the Selectman Town Administrator's Office, thirty-seven Shattuck Street, Littleton, by no later than Friday, December twelfth, two thousand fourteen, or in person at the hearing. All interested parties are invited to attend Board of Selectmen.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Come on up. Fast Franks, let me give some background and also, yeah, the exact location. I think I know where it is.
Yeah, it's one eighty-four Air Road. It's close to the sandlot from what, I'm not very familiar with that particular area, but it's close to the sandlot. I know that it's in between two industrial buildings and warehouses. So, but it's right off the road and there's plenty of room there for everything.
Is this Miss McNiff's property?
The Roslyn Hotel. Where the Roslyn is.
Yes.
The Ross Lady. Ross Lady, so Rosley.
It was, yeah, it was where the old hotel was.
And a lot of people won't remember that.
I just recently learned that, so.
What's that? I'm sorry.
That it was where the old Rosley Hotel was, yeah.
Great, I should be. And what are your plans? I mean, what are you serving? What hours of operation?
Well, our hours of operation are gonna be Monday through Saturday. We plan to do it anywhere from like two to three or four in the afternoon. Not really anything earlier or later than that, more like a lunch thing. On Saturday, it's gonna be about the same time. We might stop at three on Saturday, but during the week, we'll probably end up going till about four o'clock in the afternoon.
In opening, what time did you say?
About ten o'clock.
Well, ten o'clock, okay.
Yeah, right there before lunch and then right there after lunch.
Is it a wagon-type thing?
We are, we've got both. We has wheels on it now. We would like for it to be stationary so that we don't have to take it in every evening and bring it back out in the mornings. That would just be a little bit easier for us. But it is going to be hot dogs, clam chowder, coffee. I think we're gonna have chili and pulled pork, just lunch stuff. It's not gonna be a big restaurant. We're just gonna do hot dogs and chowder, soup, chili, pulled pork, and then potato chips. No french fries, no deep fryers or anything like that.
Louis, are you operating anywhere else?
No.
Is this your first experience in this?
Yes.
So I guess, do you have agreements already with the land property owner and all that?
Yes.
Ready to go? Thank you.
Anything else? Question?
Have you talked with the Board of Health?
We've spoken with them. We're actually waiting on our building permit to move any further forward with that. Because we're gonna have to get that set up. They're gonna have to come look at it along with the fire marshal and make sure that all of that's okay as well.
I thought one of the difficulties was refrigeration and where that was gonna be.
Right, we do have a certified kitchen already. We already spoken with that. We've got that in with our building permit as well. We'll have to go back over that with the Board of Health and that's fine, but we do have a certified kitchen for the food and deliveries and things like that.
And the certified kitchen is off-site?
Correct. For right now, yes.
So is this outdoor seating or takeaway?
It's gonna be both. We'll have takeaway. We'll have a window for ordering, a window for pickup. We're looking at maybe putting in some picnic tables back behind because there is gonna be plenty of place to park or pull in. There's both. If you'll look at that site, there's plenty of places to actually go around and then there's a drive-through at the front as well, so.
Chief King, do you have any questions about traffic or anything?
Our only concern is tractor-trail with truck traffic parking on Air Road and making sure, we'll certainly work with them on that because obviously it's a high truck traffic road and they're gonna be stopping if the food's good, so we'll certainly work. I don't know, are you setting far back on the site? Are you setting up front or?
Well, the, sorry.
All right then.
Can I address him? Okay. The car itself is going to be kind of in the middle, so they'll actually have enough room, even the tractor-trailers will have enough room to go around the back if they need to, to come in, stop to the side and then pull around and come out the other side. So there'll be an actual in and an out.
Those are our only concerns, tractor-trailers, you know, as it is, sometimes we have problems with the mobile plaza where they park there on the corner, so that's our only concern there.
Do I have apartment concerns? Right now, none? Anything else, Louis?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
So move this second to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you straightforward? Just go from?
Oh, I just have one question.
Sure.
Who's Frank and how fast is he?
He's really fast and I'm not sure who Frank is.
Ready for a motion there, Mr. Chatten?
That's pretty good.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote, it's from the master in law, chapter one forty seven, section six, to approve the application from Victoria Kinsey, manager of Fast Franks LLC, doing business as Fast Franks, for a common and particular license for the premises of one eighty-four Air Road.
Second.
Move this second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you guys. I have pretty things.
This business may be a good one to monitor, not because of the business aspects, but the whole permitting process. You know, it's fresh, it's a small business, somewhat non-complex. Surely there's always gonna be some zoning issues, there's gonna be Board of Health issues, on and on. But to see how long it takes to go through the process, what some of those hurdles may be, and then maybe we can learn as we go forward on how to help small businesses. We've talked about incentivizing, whether it's developers or others, and we want to see how we incentivize local businesses, too. And you mentioned very much, you know, the backbone, if you will, small businesses. This is a perfect example. So I certainly wish you very good luck and success.
Good point to be made, too. I know some of the hurdles that a lot of guy had to go through, so it's not as easy as it sets out.
Fast Franks, but not necessarily fast permitting.
Get them out as fast as I can.
Thank you.
If we could have the two chiefs come up, we're all set, right, for the?
Yep.
All those involved, please. Don't we have a bag, too? Called evidence.
We're missing a chief. He's still in the back of the room.
Well, I'm sure we'll hear from him back there. Good evening. Great tonight. Obviously, there've been several different news releases that we had put out jointly, Chief Wazinski and I, on some Narcan saves that we've had and I believe the whole board. Mr. Bell, a couple of times, had asked for an update on, you know, what's kind of going on and what's going on around us. So just real quick, obviously the drugs that, let me preface about this. Littleton's no different than anywhere else. We're a great community. We, we all have our, there's still every problem that's around us is here also. Drugs of choice, heroin, cocaine, prescription pill abuse, marijuana, Molly. The big difference is, for most of us, is when we were younger, you could almost pick out the people that were using drugs. There was certain demographics within our high schools or within, and today, the drug use goes from, could be from the Valley Victorian, you know, it just, it does the complete range of aspects. It's not low income, it's not middle income, it's not high income, it's, it's all incomes. It really, it crosses all demographics. One of the biggest problems we're seeing right now in this area, in the Meramec Valley, and it's in epidemic proportions, is the, the raise of the use of heroin and opiates. One reason heroin use has skyrocketed is the government, in its wisdom, has gotten better about monitoring prescription pill abuse and also made changes to, everyone has always heard of OxyContin or Oxy and things like that, well, they made changes to those pills now where you can't crush them, you can't snort them, you can't shoot them anymore. So unfortunately, the drug of choice to replace that is in fact heroin. The nineteen to twenty-five-year-old age demographic heroin use, they say is, according to the most recent statistics, it's going up by, it's gone up almost fifty percent in the last five to seven years. The use in that age range is just, is just astronomical. We were lucky, we have not had a fatal overdose in town in a while. However, we did lose a little in use in Lowell within the last year due to an overdose. So we have had nine, I think nine or ten saves.
Nine saves.
Nine saves in the last six months and we actually had another overdose this weekend down in the depot area. So this is not, this is not, it's not a daily occurrence by any means in our community, but it is a, it is a very common occurrence, well, I hate to call it common, but it's becoming a common occurrence for us to deal with. Whether it be, the Commonwealth did change its laws, thankfully, so that people don't have to fear calling the police or fire anymore if someone is overdosing. When we get there, our main concern is saving, whoever's life is being threatened, they cannot be charged with possession of the, of the drug or, or anything else in, in either, in the people who made the phone calls. So, you know, that's a good thing.
Chief, when did that go into effect? Say it again? When did that go into effect?
That's been in effect for a couple of years now. The Good Samaritan law, they made, they made the changes when they were bringing Narcan, trying to get that out and trying to get police departments and fire departments using it.
Is that called, right, the whole safe baby thing for municipalities and stuff, too?
I'm not sure. I think it's all around the same timeframe, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, from the National Drug Intelligence Center, this is a quote directly from them, heroin has emerged as a threat equal to or greater than cocaine in Massachusetts. After has posing less of a threat throughout the nineties, in the twentieth or twenty-first century, it's become the, it's a greater problem than cocaine in our areas. Middlesex in the Meramec Valley are noted to be some of the worst areas right now for this. And, you know, we are, you know, our town has four major exits off the highway and we're on the main, we're on the main supply route to northern, the northern states and also from, you know, if you look at our cities of, you know, I'm not picking on them, but Lawrence, Lowell, Portsmouth, Hampshire, Portland, Maine, all the way down, you know, we're, we're right in the center of it. We also, the type of drug dealing, of course, today is much different than it was. The advent of cell phones, basically it's a car-to-car, you know, it's a car delivery service a lot of times. So it's, it's very difficult to detect on a, on a regular basis, the amount of dealing that used to occur out of houses and bars and things like that. When I first was working with the DEA and other things back early in my career in the eighties, it doesn't happen anymore today. Today, it's all drive-bys. We monitored many of these uses and performance where it's typically was a drive-by on a dead-end street or a side street or a parking lot or, you'd be surprised probably how many, you don't realize how many drug dealers you've probably sat next to and not even realized that was going on next to you in our local community on a, on a day-to-day basis. And that, and I'm not exaggerating, especially because we have all those exits off the highway. I mean, I'll have Chief Wazinski talk a little bit about Narcan and then I'm gonna get into a little bit more depth about Littleton's issues.
So Narcan or naloxone, it's an opiate antagonist. Basically, counter-affects the use of heroin or morphine. It's a simple dose, comes in the file, just in a simple package. We carry this on each of our ambulances and it just screws together. It has a little nasal jet so that you put the dosing in and it's typically for somebody that is unconscious, either barely breathing or not breathing. The opiate actually slows, slows everything down when, when there's an overdose. It slows your heart rate down, slows or stops your breathing. And, and that's typically how we find them, barely breathing or not breathing. And so we've, we put the Narcan, put the Narcan together and they get a half a dose on each nostril. And within one to three minutes, they typically start to breathe on their own again and they come to. Some of the side effects, if you bring them back too quick, they may wake up in a rage and, and start, and wake up swinging. In some cases, they're, you know, still very mellow and it's, it's a perfect time for us to do a transfer, get them into the ambulance, get them all restrained. And it's basically reversing their high.
Many of them very upset at us that we actually ruined their high, as they've said to us.
And, yeah.
Even though they were, even though they were basically, you know, dead.
Yeah. And, and they don't realize it. What they say is it's a typical, you know, feeling of euphoria. They feel warm and just at ease and it's, their body is just shutting down. And that's what happens. But you can pass that around. It's just a simple vial and a nasal jet that goes in each side of their, their nostril, that little dose of spray. But that's enough to bring them back.
So are you trained, are all your firefighters trained in the use of this?
All the EMTs are, yes.
All the EMTs are?
Correct.
What about patrolmen and the police? Are you carrying any of that?
We just get our approvals from Emerson Hospital, where our approval comes from, and we're just, we're ready to go through training to be able to deploy it in the cruisers. But with the advent, you know, and not to, with the advent of twenty-four-seven coverage at the fire department, that, you know, certainly, well, I guarantee these, some of these people are alive because of that.
Absolutely. I mean...
No doubt in my mind.
With the ability of the ambulance to be there at the same time, if not before, cruisers administer, to administer this stuff, it makes all the difference in the world. Like I've said, several of these patients have, have not been breathing that have received this and are conscious and talking by the time we leave.
Is this for heroin?
Any opiate.
Any opiate?
Yep.
I'm just gonna pass around, is there a...
Two separate herons?
Two separate heroin is all from Littleton. They're either purchases we made or recoveries.
You can tell the difference in here and some, one of them's more white. It just depends on what it's cut with.
Pass around the needle right behind it, do it.
And this is some of the other ways, the unfortunate ways we end up finding them, in needles all ready to go when searching cars, the officers are faced with, you know, needle sticks and everything else. And part of the Good Samaritan law, they also made it not illegal to be in possession of a hypodermic needle anymore. We used to be able to arrest for that, but now we can't.
Back when I was, back when I was a sergeant, I actually took a needle stick from a heroin addict on Kennedy Street.
The bracelet mean anything?
No.
That was just part of it.
Oh, okay.
But all those, everything there, that's just, you know, some of it, but everything there has either been purchased by or recovered in Littleton one time or another.
And that's thirty bucks.
And that's the problem, is heroin has become so inexpensive. An Oxy, an OxyContin pill that is crushable right now is going for thirty, thirty to forty dollars on the street.
Pill?
A pill, one single pill, right now. And it's crushable. And most of those are getting shipped up from, from Mexico or, you know, this heroin originated well out of our country and ships up, you know, via the cartels out of, you know, out of Mexico and comes up here. So some of the things we've been, you know, or one of the things, narcotic abuse, is probably one of the number-one effects on property crime in our community. It accounts for probably ninety-five percent of our break-in and enterings, our larcenies, our family members stealing from family members, workers stealing from work, you know, it, it, it's just an insidious disease. it, it, uh, it, it, it's just an insidious, uh, disease, uh, when these people get into it. But what can we do? Well, one of the things is, is, you know, is education more than anything else, and trying to, uh, trying to get to these kids when they're younger, trying to get to people when they're younger, and let them know, you know, you know, heroin is so highly addictive, um, that, uh, you know, and it becomes such a part of their life. I, I was reading a couple of different stories today about people out of, uh, one, a woman out of this town whose daughter, uh, you know, basically, uh, went down, uh, you know, the, the heroin chute, for lack of a better term, and, uh, you know, no longer, uh, really has anything to do with her family anymore. She's, you know, a, a twenty-year-old girl who, uh, who has become, uh, you know, living on the streets. Um, I'm gonna pass around some pretty disturbing things to you, um, you won't be able to, you won't be able to see any faces or anything like that on these, but these are both, uh, just pass those a little out to, there's two of them there, blonde and a brunette. There's a blonde and a brunette there advertising on Backpage as escort services. One girl graduated our high school a year ago, the other girl graduated two years before, and there's currently a girl who was in our high school, currently educa-, uh, uh, for escorts on Backpage to support their habits. These are kids in our school system or a year out of our school system that are, that are doing that, and those are actual ads of those, of those people. So, it, it, you know, it's, uh, you know, it does happen here and it, uh, and it is happening here. So, uh, drug awareness in the schools, I'm gonna let Detective Fernandez, uh, I, I kinda, I, I sent along to you the, the day in the life of the SRO to show you how much has changed, and, while this isn't a pitch, I'm certainly gonna pitch it tonight, that's the reason I asked for the eighteenth officer, is that, that I need that full-time, one-hundred-percent dedicated person within the schools now, and I need the dedicated detectives to be able to, to really at least hit the, the dealers and the identification within our community. But that's a discussion, the rest of that for a different day. But I'll let Detective Fernandez go a little bit over, uh, onto, you know, drug education in the school and where we can improve, and, you know, what, what role he kind of, uh, is playing right now, or I should say Sergeant Fernandez, sorry.
Uh, much of the, uh, drug awareness education that's going on in the schools right now is being done on the classroom level. Uh, the, our health, uh, fitness teachers, uh, do a phenomenal job both at the middle school level and at the high school in, uh, having a curriculum as far as being aware of what the dangers of drug abuse or what it can lead to. Oftentimes, they've asked me to, um, participate in classrooms when they're, uh, covering a certain topic, um, and so that's, uh, that's been a portion of my level in the sense that, uh, I'm able to go into the classrooms, uh, and talk with the students, uh, from a different perspective other than just their teachers, uh, and oftentimes, uh, try to bring a, a real-life perspective as to what maybe police officers see on a day-to-day basis, so, um, to carry that, uh, there's a lot of conversations within the hallways of the high school, uh, and oftentimes, uh, some of these cases that Chief King had talked about, um, uh, there was, uh, just frequent, uh, kind of unofficial check-ins, uh, by the resource officer, um, and other school officials on, uh, you know, some of our students that were at risk, uh, or that we, we, you know, we believe were at risk. Um, so, uh, at a different level, we've, uh, last year, we brought, uh, with the, uh, Patrolmen's Association and the assistance of, uh, law enforcement, uh, excuse me, the educational funds, we were to bring Chris Heron to the high school, which was a, uh, from all accounts, a very powerful presentation. Uh, Chris Heron was a, uh, NBA basketball star that, uh, fell into heroin most of his life and, um, basically went from the top to rock bottom, and he's a phenomenal speaker, and he came in last year. Uh, many, many students, uh, gave feedback that it was an incredible presentation. Uh, we've also encompassed out with having other officers come in. We did an all-school assembly with some of our other police officers that have been affected by, uh, some form of abuse or of, uh, alcohol abuse, speaking with the children, and, and again, that was, uh, an assembly that we had at the high school level, it was tremendous, so. Um, it's these day-to-day, uh, conversations and assemblies and classroom education that's, uh, really our focus right now and our tackle on drug awareness in the community and schools.
This is a quick overdose there. Uh, one thing that just hit me, uh, as I was looking at some of the other things I looked at, um, December, uh, this was released that, uh, currently, Eastern Mass, which we're considered part of, we are the highest in the nation for opiate, opiate dose, sorry, opiate overdoses in the nation right now, so, we're, you know, we're right there in that, this epicenter. Uh, prevention and enforcement, uh, I was talking a little bit about, uh, what the school resource officer does, like, uh, Deputy Patterson did just go a little bit into drug court, which is an activity that Littleton has participated in since its inception.
Um, Air District Court, um, started approximately ten years ago with a, a drug court. It's a diversion program, and it's, uh, post-conviction, uh, so it's not taken them before they go through the system. They go through the system and they're either found guilty or most likely they're given a continued without a finding with, um, a sentence hanging over their head. And instead of being, um, sent to prison, sent to jail, um, to deal with their addiction, um, they're sent to, uh, drug court. And it's a four-phase program that the quickest you can get to do it is one year, and you're, the first phase, you're in front of the judge every single week, and you're tested three to four times a week randomly, um, for drug testing, and you have to attend three, three to four, um, group sessions with advocates out of air, their counseling group. And then it goes on from there, you go to, um, phase two, and, and that goes every other week. Phase three is every three weeks, and phase four is, uh, once a month, you're in front of the judge. And the testing varies throughout it, but it's always random and stuff, so you're held, held to a really strict, uh, guidelines on that aspect of it. But what we're finding is, uh, again, there's a lot more of the nineteen to twenty-five-year-olds that are out there committing the B and Es and breaking into cars and doing all this, that their problem for doing that is the drug addiction, so they're, they're trying to secure that addiction by, uh, sending them through this diversion program instead of just locking them up for the time. Uh, you lock them up, they come out and the cycle starts all over again. Uh, so I've been involved with that for about seven years now, I'm the, uh, officer, the liaison for the, the thirteen towns, um, that go, go to Air District Court, so, uh, it's a very effective program.
So, Sergeant Patta, or Deputy Patterson also described to me a, a woman from a major company, um, in her fifties, who made very, very large money and basically stole from all of her family and everything else to support her-
Just to support her happiness.
Just to support her heroin habit.
And she was hiding it from work and, and, uh, she actually felt she was more productive while she was on it. And, uh, you know, she did, she did a good job hiding it from work, and, um, now she's going through the program. Fifty-four years old, first charges ever, so.
I was in prison too, so you can't get away from that.
Hold on, hold, hold, just a moment. Uh, so, I guess what can we do as a community? You know, some of the things, uh, moving forward, what I'm looking at is, uh, I'm, uh, looking at different, uh, seeing what kind of programs are out there to raise awareness, like to expand the role of the school resource officer. Um, currently, we participate in several different drug task forces, uh, and we're gonna continue to, uh, to do, uh, buys, you know, uh, we, we have helped and had help within our own community, uh, arresting and prosecuting drug dealers and, uh, and also in all our border towns and a couple towns, you know, over in Lowell, Fitchburg, wherever, because our youths are traveling to these areas to buy these drugs. Sometimes they're buying them in Littleton when there's a dealer available here, or the transport's here, or they're going to our border communities or to these cities to pick up these drugs, and as we get information, we share, and we were actually with Lowell able to bring down a, a house over Lowell just recently, um, who was supplying narcotics to, uh, especially to, uh, to females, and, uh, you know, w- we were able to work through that. Um, obviously, I don't wanna get too much into, to our, our narcotic, our drug activities as far as enforcement goes, we just be reassured, you know, uh, while I'm certainly part one of the for programs and for, uh, for trying to drug court and things of that nature, we're still a, a law enforcement agency, and we will zealously, uh, go after any, uh, drug dealer that we have in our community or that comes across our attention. However, realize within the boundaries of the law, making your drug case is not something that takes a day, a week, it can take months, you know, it's a, it's a very time-consuming, and, you know, to, to make the, you know, you, you, you know, to get a search warrant, you need at least three or four, you know, purchases and things like that. You have to be able to connect it back to a residence, a car, or whatever, um, so, you know, drug cases are not, you know, as simple as we get to see on television where, you know, they, they do it in, uh, in a day or two, so, but we, uh, we work with that. Kane and I, I'm sure I'm looking forward to having that around the town, uh, for both its, uh, search capabilities and its, uh, it'll help, uh, Sergeant Fernandez, you know, said to me the other day, it'll be nice when we have our own, because, uh, you know, sometimes now we don't, you know, if there's not one available, you know, do it when the patrols are dealing with somebody that, uh, is probably a transport or a mule, um, you can't find somebody to come out and do your search, uh, so, uh, we're looking forward to that part, uh, as far as enforcement goes. I continue to support drug court and look for other worthwhile and proven programs and community awareness to remind people that this does happen here, and it's not just in the city, and it's a problem throughout the, the Commonwealth and throughout the country, but the Merrimack Valley for opiate use is, uh, is extremely, uh, high right now.
Well, I'm sorry, your two, your two organizations you're affiliated with, I'm not concerned like, uh, any type of task force affiliated with those two organizations or?
Yes, to both, and we're involved in all of them.
What are their activities?
Um, you know, it depends on, you know, who's, who's hot and who's got what going right now. Um, we just assisted with a border town last week with a heroin dealer, um, but, you know, or, or, you know, or, you know, uh-
Are resources available to the town if necessary?
Well, no, they've, they've, uh, they've all been available to us and have all, uh, helped us with our undercover operations within our own community also. So, it's, by no means is it just outside, it's just as much inside.
Taking away the highways, without the highways, and being in the schools, dating way back when I was in college, it was, the problem was there too. Is it percentage more now, or is it different drugs, or, um, because it's always, it's always been there, do we have an, in, I know it's more in town because of our location, but you take that away, is it, is it percentage any higher now than it was twenty years ago?
Um, yes, well, according to statistics it is, but it's, opiate use certainly has, has gone up. Uh, and a lot of that is the advent of these different, uh, narcotics that were originally used as, you know, prescription abuse, and then, uh, you know, unfortunately, when it gets out there in the press that, okay, you know, the high from oxycodone is very similar to the high from heroin, heroin now has become very pure, and you don't have to just use a needle for it anymore, you can smoke it, you can snort it, where when we were younger, you know, it was only people who were using needles, um, so that, that's, you know, that's a large change, and, uh, you know, it just seems that different drugs become the different drug of choice. Let's face it, in the eighties, cocaine was the drug of choice, you know, you know, to some degree in this area, um, and, you know, in the nineties, and heroin now has emerged as the, uh, the new, uh, drug of choice, it's, uh, you know, and it's, uh, you know, because it's a more of a, it's a depressant and things like that, you know, I think more and more people in this high-paced world we live in are turning to that type of, of that type of high, for lack of a better term, the euphoric low.
Use of the prescription drugs has really broken down the, the, uh, the stigma on heroin, because they start getting hooked on the prescription drugs and they're paying the, the forty, fifty, sixty dollars a pill, and, you know, they would have to buy a lot in order to get the high that they need. Um, once they're getting that high, they, they look at, well, I can, I can get it so much cheaper, and it takes that one person to say, hey, just, just try it, and it's really broken down the stigma of using heroin. And again, not, not always having to use it in a needle form, uh, has also helped, so.
Some of it.
During, during sobering information. I really appreciate it, and I think if we can continue to make, maintain the dialogue and, you know, everybody do what they can, that sounds like the only hope we have of turning the tide in this.
Mr. Crowley, you have a question?
Yeah, Joe, um, to, to, uh, Chief, what, what's happened with marijuana?
Um, I mean marijuana now, you know, basically, uh, uh, you know, under the new laws, uh, you know, which it's, yeah, I mean, for lack, it's, it's, you know, under an ounce is, is ba-, you know, is a civil fine, um, you know, it's still out there, obviously, and if, if we come across someone who's, you know, dealing it, especially if it's, you know, uh, you know, we'll, you know, for lack of a better term, we'll deal with it, but, uh, obviously, I'd much rather expend, uh, you know, uh, the man-hours and things, uh, that we're utilizing right now to, to go after these narcotics and the prescription bills. Um, you know, we certainly have not turned away if we've got a dealer in any of our places.
There was just an article in the Lowell Sun about them getting dispensary, so, uh, that's coming online.
There is a dispensary too?
Huh?
There is a dispensary too?
Yeah, and, uh, I think the incoming governor is, um, has, you know, wants, I don't know what, want, but, you know, if the people are voting to get these dispensaries online, they should be online, so, it'll be interesting next six, eight months.
Well, there's distinct human toll in all of this, um, and you said it's not a pitch, um, and I didn't take it as a pitch, but it's certainly a cost of doing business. You mentioned number of breaking and enterings and other sort of crimes that are associated or a result of the addiction, and to be able to feed the addiction, um, being able to lower the demand, and thus the number of those addicted reduces that. So, that's a, you know, incredible collateral benefit from just a monetary and anxiety cost, if you will, the human cost being so incredibly important. Now, the two examples you gave, um, obviously, we knew these kids, um, they weren't alien to us, in our own town, our community, our schools, um, while empirically, we can't say there would have been three or four if we had no SRO, but we certainly know, uh, anecdotally, our SROs have done a tremendous job, you know, Pablo, um, Matt prior to you, um, reaching out to these kids and knowing them. And on that, I'd just like to ask, now that we've seen something and we have two-case studies, so to speak, can we look back over the last two, three, five years at those kids and their activities, who they were with, and see if we can learn anything from that as to what did we miss at that point, or, and sometimes, some people just unreachable too, and you don't wanna throw your hands up, per se, um, but at some point you go like, I tried everything, at least everything I knew I could do. And I'm not asking for a definitive thing here tonight, 'cause actually that's something with the school committee and the superintendent, I think, could be helpful, 'cause, you know, well, certainly it's not all sixteen hundred kids that are in our school district, you know, 'cause that's gotten the kindergartens and the, you know, first graders, so to speak, but certainly a substantial number of our children, you know, right there in our own high school, our middle school. And we look at the Emerson Rick's Rescue Survey, excuse me, you know, that biennial, uh, survey that Emerson Hospital does, and we're in the catchment area for it, and we see that, and it reaches down into the sixth, fifth grade even, uh, these temptations. So, it's not just a high school problem, and expanding the SRO, I think, serves our community well, exponentially well, so, thank you.
You know, just one other quick thing, I'm probably, I don't know if any of you have ever had your house broken into, but if you talk to anybody who has, it's, it's a, it's a lifelong remembrance, especially, uh, my mom, you know, walked in, uh, on someone who broke into her house in Bedford, and, uh, we're talking about someone who was pissed off that somebody was in her house, who didn't belong there. But, you know, it, it, it's something you remember for a long time.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, you ready for motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second to adjourn all is a fatal.
Aye.
Thank you for, thank you for watching and happy holidays.